During hours for him right now.
That's why it was children.
During hours. Alright. Thank you all, thank you all for coming tonight to the August 5th, 2025, Pudgeon Valley, planning commission work session. For the benefit of our junior commissioners, as well as anyone in the audience who's never been to one of these before, work sessions are not public meetings, not public hearings. They are a much more casual setting, so they are usually requested by the applicant to come and present something and get feedback from the planning commission before they're put on an agenda. They, yes.
Slight correction, they are public meetings in the sense the public can attend, they're not public hearings.
Yes. Yeah. Yes. But they are much less formal, so again, for the commissioners, no reason to ask permission to speak or anything like that. It's a very, oh, that's not fair, this is from 2024. They're on the middle of the table. These are my little ones. It's a slightly more formal than a free for all, but definitely a casual discussion group setting, so. We have a couple items on tonight's agenda, and before we open, I would like to ask the planning staff, if you can talk to us about why there's no.
To a work session?
Yes, I understand, but in the past, there have also been packets to give people, especially when we have two brand new planning commissioners who have no historic knowledge about things that have come before us in the past, some sort of executive summary, some sort of information.
As we've mentioned a few times in the past, when you asked for this, we've given the same answer, we just don't have staffing resources to do that right now. Mostly because we're down a few people, so it'd be nice, it'd be really nice, I think, for us to be able to have enough time to put together a memo for you guys, but we don't have that, it's a little bit like, for our new planning commissioner, it's a little bit like what we did a few years back when we were looking at new ordinances. Sometimes when that new stuff is coming out, it's better to talk about it as we're going through it together than it is to try and interpret what it is and make assumptions before knowing, you know, altogether what it is, so that's the other side of this, not to make moral reasons or justifications, but yeah, when it comes to work sessions, it'll probably continue to be like this for the rest of the year if we have work sessions. No packets for the work session, but we'll, we'll guide you through the documents.
Okay.
Sure, I have a question for you, more rhetorical question, just so that we understand that before any decisions can be made, there will be a full packet.
Oh, no, absolutely.
And that everybody that's here has access to that and can then at a public hearing.
Understood.
Right, so we're just here to listen and to.
Understood. The reason I bring it up, and we've had the discussion in the past, is that even just to honor the request of our applicants, we can have a more thorough and productive conversation if we come with a basis of understanding. And some of these items are not new, right? I have historic records for Matlow and Gateway. I have, you know, there's, obviously Nordic Village has, has a history, and so there is information out there that could have been provided or summarized, it would have been a more, I think, a more productive discussion, but as the applicants haven't provided anything, it is what it is, and we'll have the discussion that we're capable of having at this point.
Yep, I'm gonna hand out to you guys some of the pages for the first two items, some paperwork that we'll go over together. Kind of do just a guided narration of what they have in here for both, yeah, for the first one and the second one, and then Tammy's got the third one, are we just going off of what the applicant is presenting, or do we have any information to provide?
Nothing outside of what the applicant's gonna.
Sorry, Charlie, because this has happened in the past, so you have information to hand out to us?
I do right now.
You do?
Yep, just off the press.
Okay, am I, because really that could have just been, people read it, this has happened before. Alright, we're gonna move forward, because we're not gonna be able to fix any of this, but I just, things go better when we're prepared in advance.
Yeah, understood, prepare for it to continue to be like this until the new city takes over, and then city can fund staffing as I see fit. Okay.
What do you have?
Ready for the next, so the first item on the agenda is the development agreement for Gateway Estates.
Historically, we've done the pledge of allegiance to roll call in the work sessions.
So we were asking about this, and we didn't, we can if you'd like, we don't believe that that's true in the past, but we're more than welcome to do it, would you?
Well, when I, when I served as the chair.
Yes.
Staff has told me that's what we should do in a work session.
Okay, I have not been given those instructions, but I am more than happy to start with the pledge of allegiance. There is a flag in the, that we can all stand. And for the record, for roll call, we have Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Warburton, Commissioner Barber, Commissioner Wampler, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Gross, thank you, I almost said different Heidi, and we are missing Commissioner Frower.
Oh, yes.
Frower is absent, so six of the seven are present. Anything else we'd like to work in? Okay, so we're gonna start with work session number one.
Yep, Gateway Estates, so this was on the top of the agenda for your work session last meeting, but I got way late in the other room and wasn't able to be in here to give you the presentation, so I think you guys went through it pretty quickly. There are some things in this development agreement that I want to make sure that we're all on the same page about, make sure you guys are comfortable having these things be in a development agreement.
They're in a development agreement already?
Well, sorry, it's a proposed, proposed, good question, proposed development agreement.
I've never known the case.
The applicant, as you guys know, is requesting the, just to be able to do a subdivision, subdivision that has already been pre-approved for a preliminary plat, but wants to be vested in the ability to do that subdivision for, they're asking for 30 years. So as I, as you guys take one and pass them down.
Charlie, what's the normal? Length of time?
If it's, if it's not a master plan development, I usually don't recommend more than 10 years.
So this is significant.
It is, it is, and the reason why it's significant is because what the county would be doing, and the county would be doing this, and the city would be obligated to follow it, is essentially saying, if we enter into this agreement for 30 years, invest you into what this says and what the codes say, the county and the city can't change that as it applies to that property for 30 years, or until the applicant and the city mutually dissolve the contract, so that is significant, the, there are some provisions under state law, might even be the state constitution about legislative authority taking action to abridge future legislative decisions, you can't be a, you can't be a county commissioner and say, we hereby declare that no future decisions can be made, right, because that binds the hands of future elected officials, and so there are some limitations on how legislative authority can be bridled, and the longer and longer a development agreement goes, the yeah, the more, more challenges there may be with that, okay. Normally, again, like I say, I wouldn't recommend more than 10, what you're being asked by the applicant with, without, oh, I'm gonna use all the words, but he's asking it without using so many words, is to allow this development agreement to prevail for 30 years, giving him the opportunity to do, I think it's a 30-phase development, and that 30-phase development is a 30-lot subdivision, so the idea is they'd like the opportunity to be able to plant one lot at a time, year over year. So that's, that's the basis of it, the Gateway Estates development that's right at, it's to the east of Green Hills Estates, just as Canyon Narrows. It's right there on the north side of Highway 39. And there's already a couple lots that have already been planted in there. Okay, what you'll see in these documents, if you turn to page two, the red strikeout or anything that's in blue underline, red strikeout is staff is recommending just not, eliminating that terminology, and then blue underline is staff is recommending adding that in, and our recommendations, these are probably what we would request of the planning commission to make sure gets changed in this document before it's forwarded on to the county commissioners, just to protect the county and to protect the future city. On top of that, anything above and beyond that, I've just got comments on the side for you guys to consider, okay?
Some are red, some are highlighted in yellow.
Yeah.
The difference between the two?
Yeah, so the highlighted in yellow, those are the developers' asks, okay, so but let's first talk about what they're willing to offer, the offer is $50,000 to the Eden Valley Trail Foundation for the purpose of trail building purposes. Your task is gonna be to determine whether or not the asks that we go over in this agreement are worth the value of a $50,000 donation for community trails in the, in the public.
Is that the only gift, or are you pausing?
That's the only thing that's been offered.
And we had also talked about how the roads were private, and he was having, he gave a commitment to maintain, putting in and maintaining the roads as private roads.
Was that last week?
No, that was back in, what was that, the last one, well, there you go.
Of this year?
No, I don't know, but it was before that too, because that was, Trevor was here. I have, I brought all the genitals, but it'll take me a second to find them, but it's in here. When was the first time it came in, 2024?
Remember, Tammy, I mean, it's been a few years. Might even be 22.
Oh, yeah.
You mean the original subdivision?
Initially came in, the original subdivision.
We can find it, Commissioner Schuman was here. I feel like we also talked about, this was when we had a discussion about how there was no packet for the Bridges contract, and it was like a six-page packet we got in the meeting, whatever meeting that was, it was a few months ago.
Yeah.
Maybe in winter?
Yeah, that may have been the case.
Spring or winter?
Well, if it was that first Bridges meeting that was last December.
Specifically, there were things we were asking, and one of them was not, because I remember specifically having the language of not putting an extra burden on the new city, because these were roads that had not been calculated during the feasibility or anything, these are brand-new roads, and it would just add an extra burden, and he had at the time committed to keeping them private, and he would maintain them and file them and everything else.
Perfect.
So that would need to go in as well.
And that's not in here right now?
Not right now, no, in fact, if you look at the preliminary plan, the approved, the currently approved preliminary plan, which is attached to the back, there are public streets and a private street, which, when we originally looked at this before the city was under discussion, we wanted to make sure that there was decent enough public street connectivity to surrounding properties in case those property owners choose to develop as well, but I think that's a good observation, at least for, it's a conservative request for the city.
So.
As they get started.
Marta, I don't know if you're able to do it, or Tammy, while we're talking, but if someone's able to kind of do the search on the online of what agendas this developer has been on, we might be able to narrow down, and then I'm willing to come back, like, I'll go back and I'll re-listen to the entire work session, as fun as that is to then come back, because I'm not sure, those are the ones who I remember, but there might have been additional asks and commitments that I'm not remembering, and I would want to refresh my memory before we nail down anything.
Yeah, fair enough, and I think that's important to do, because what we have in front of us is the result of the discussions with the developer since then, and so if it's, if what you're asking for and what we did talk about in the past is not in here, then it's not in here deliberately.
So can I ask really quick, because I would look through this Reddit, but since we're sitting right here, so this is not a cluster?
No.
HOA?
Standard subdivision, no HOA.
Okay.
Actually, there will need to be an HOA if there's going to be private streets, so.
Right, correct, okay, so 416 acres, do we know how much of those are buildable?
All of it, they've, they've shown us.
So, so they want to put, I mean, they could have, by the three acres, they could have 139 homes, and they want to put 30 lots on them, right, so 13 acres?
And so it's different. Yeah. You're right, so as you get up higher on the hill, it's F40.
Oh, we're already at F40, hey, that would have been good to know.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're actually asking for more density?
No, no, the approved preliminary plat that has already been approved, it's in the back of the agreement, that is the density that was, was.
He's not asking for new density, this is just.
Just asking to keep it the same.
Okay, so density is the same, alright.
Really, what I think that he's asking for is he doesn't want the city to be able to change the rules on him for the next 30 years, so that he can bring this subdivision in fruition, I think that's what he's asking for.
Okay, we'd love to hear from him, okay, alright, thank you, Charlie, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, wait, so let's, before we bring him up, so let's go through these highlighted yellow, these asks, some of them are interesting.
Yep, yep, not done going through it.
Okay.
So if you run over to, boy, that's that page number, section 2.1.
Still remembering the lines.
Yeah, again, I didn't write this. You know, if I wrote it, we'd be numbering lines.
Yes, a lot of those.
Okay, vested rights, yes.
So the developer's asking to vest the project in current laws, which means ordinance changes cannot be applied to the term, throughout the term of this agreement, so doesn't mean, doesn't mean the city can't adopt new rules or new laws, they just want to be able to apply it.
Isn't that the same for any development agreement?
Yes.
But it's not usually the law.
Snow Basin has a development agreement.
It, yeah, it depends.
The then existing laws.
Yep, it depends, it's not the then existing laws unless the development agreement specifically says that, so if it says we hereby approve this under today's laws and we're vested under today's laws specifically, then yes, that would be vested. What you'll find in a lot of our development agreements is the only thing that's being vested are the specific differences that you'll find in the agreement that's different than what's in the county code. Otherwise, the county code prevails, and any new laws, so long as they don't inhibit the ability for what is vested, could potentially be implied.
So they're not usually that.
That's what I heard, I heard that normally it's 10 years, and he's asking for 30. Well, Charlie's representing 10 years is what he typically recommends.
Yes.
Yes.
And of course, different situations are different.
Sure.
Okay, this isn't the typical subdivision. Okay, so I think you just said under a typical development agreement, that doesn't say we're vesting under today's laws, we're laying out things that are different than today's laws, and we're perpetuating them.
Yep.
Wait, is 10 years a law or a consideration? Is that something you could, so when you're saying law, he's saying that he suggests it's not shall only be for 10 years.
Well, let's also back up from just that just a little bit, because I'm not suggesting 10 years on this one.
Right, I understand, but we're talking about 30 versus, versus 10, and so what he's trying to do is lock in his vested rights, that's all he's trying to do. Okay, and so you're saying that in norm, in an average situation like this, you would recommend 10 years of vested interests? Okay, but he's asking for 30, okay, that's.
Right, so he's asking for three times what's normal, and so we're to consider whether or not they give, is worth three times the.
Absolutely, right, right, so that would just talk.
Just a quick clarification, if, so I understand that's the county level, if the state makes some changes at the state level, does that then apply within this, or is he vested for 30 years?
It can, it depends on what the state is changing at the state level, for example, if the state creates a law that says you can no longer have a development agreement that says X, Y, and Z, and there's a bunch of development agreements that have X, Y, and Z, and they essentially nullify that provision.
That's what's taking.
It, it could be, now, the development agreement could be that, if it's the legislature doing it, it's probably gonna be the city and the county cannot require X, Y, and Z, that's usually what they would do, and I've seen it a couple of times.
Okay, but let's, like, so for example, some of the things that are on the dockets right now that the state's playing around with, say, like, so ADUs are affordable housing, new developments need to account for a percentage or something like that, he has not, he has 30 years, he's moving somewhat slowly, so he's still in development, it hasn't been developed, or maybe he hasn't even built the first home yet, would the state's new statute apply to him, or is he vested for 30 years no matter what?
No, the state's new statute would apply.
But the city would not, because he's being vested as a county, as a legislative body, and our new legislative bodies is at the same level or different from that.
Let's take a step back, because we're getting confused.
Seven, see, laws that last a couple of years ago, if trumped everything, so well.
That's awesome, I think it'd be good, that's why I'm asking.
Let's take a break from looking at the written text, and let's just go to the back, take a look at the preliminary plat. If you read through the development agreement, what the applicant is asking to be vested is this preliminary plat.
Do you have this, by the way, on the computer that the audience can see on this thing?
I, I could find it, I'm not logged in.
Okay, alright, we'll continue, but I just, yeah, that, that would be nice if we could follow up, so this first map, or no?
Yes, any of the maps, all the maps are part of the approved preliminary plat.
Okay.
So he's not saying I want to be vested in all the rules of law that exist right now, he wants to be vested in whatever rule allowed this to be approved, whatever rules allowed this to be approved, so.
It's not just F40.
So he is asking for the zoning density to be entitled, he's asking for the street configuration to be entitled, asking for lot sizes to be entitled, those kinds of things. But if the county code or the city code changes to say, on these properties, you can, you are required now to only build 10,000 square foot homes, let's, you know, let's be ridiculous for a second, that can be applied, because he's not vested in whatever rule that says he's not required to do.
The street, the density, and you name three, street density and configuration.
Yeah, it's, I don't know, picture says a thousand words, so whatever is here. Now, basically, with that vesting, what he could do later on, if somebody tried to apply a rule to the property, and he thinks it conflicts with something that this development agreement vests in, then he can sue or declare breach or whatever it is, and get a judge to determine whether or not the city has infringed on something that has been vested.
Right, and I want to let you get back, because there's quite a few of these asks, and one of them I saw just glancing, says something about it can be overwhelming, it's just that. Yeah, that's it. Something about an overwhelming, in order to try to make a change.
Compelling, countervailing public interest, so.
Yeah, so let's let you get back to your ask, you've only done one.
The vest, yeah, the vesting doctrine under state code as well as in case law, there are some specifics that run with it. If there is a compelling, countervailing public interest, whatever they're vested in is going to create a force fire, for example, the city can create and impose new rules at that point, but compelling, countervailing public interest, I don't actually know what the legal standard is on appeal, but it's high, it can't just because we want it to be that way.
Right.
There's gotta be a really big compelling and countervailing.
And it's probably not fully defined.
I, I would guess not, you know?
Don't know if I've actually seen that in a case that I've looked at specifically, which doesn't mean it isn't there, but I don't think I've looked specifically at that issue.
Under circumstances of flooding, for example, there may be some land use rules where the county suspends those rules or suspends those entitlements or allowances through the flooding period because of compelling, countervailing public interest, we're trying to make sure we take care of the public as well.
Okay, so we do that at the risk of being sued?
Potentially, yes, and then if a judge tells us that he did it right, then great, and if we did it wrong, we probably owe somebody money.
But so, before I was talking about land use, like the state, what about water, so say whoever, they're doing Weaver Basin Water, or somebody, or even just the conservancy keeps scaling back irrigation, things like that, that doesn't, that's not vested into old rules, those are, they still apply, is that correct? New conservation, new water restrictions or water issues?
Yep, those would still, yep, those would be applicable, so let's say the Weaver Basin Conservancy District, or the city, or whoever it is, applies a higher, a higher conservation threshold, so maybe it's no outdoor irrigation, for example, that could be applied.
Okay, it's just land use code that he wants vested.
Particular points of land use code that turned into a preliminary plat.
So, so Charlie, the way, can I jump in, please, man, okay, so under 2.1, I mean, it is written currently to say the developer, starting on the second line, the developer is vested with all rights to develop the property in accordance with county's vested laws, including the provisions of the zoning without modification or change by the county, except as specifically provided herein, then it gets into some specific language, according, meaning develop and construct the project in accordance with this agreement and the preliminary plat, and then talking about infrastructure, but I think that general language first does refer to being vested with all rights to develop in accordance with county's vested laws, which I think is pretty broad.
Oh, the fun exercise in futility, I apologize, I didn't realize that, so if you flip the page back over one, you can see the definition of county's vested laws. We are asking for a change to what they have written here, but county's vested laws means the ordinances of the county in effect as of the effective date, so that is the specificity, Commissioner Burton, that I think we were, you were referring to, that's what their best. So if, again, if this gets approved.
The ordinances, but specifically the ones that apply here, F5, F40, I mean, other ordinances are not vested, if it's not on this piece of property.
Could be, the way it's written, it would be potentially any of the county's ordinances in effect at this time.
Still gotta be applicable to the.
It would apply to the development.
To the commercial zone.
So like F40 has certain rights and uses, there has to still be those certain rights and uses, so if we pulled F40 over, theoretically, if we just pulled, swept all the, the code over, then we would be fine.
If the city courts the counties.
Okay.
Yeah, and if the city doesn't and creates completely new ordinances, they hold on to F40 and F5.
Right, but F40 and F5, the way it says the, the ordinances of the county, what about, say, form-based, if the new city doesn't pull it over, it's an ordinance of the county, can he rezone into it, can he ask for rezone into it, if it's not adopted?
That's actually nice.
I mean, the ordinances of the county.
The city does not yet, the city has no ordinance.
I understand.
So what I think he's saying is, I can build it today, I just want more time to build it, and I want to be able to build it like I could today, so everything that's legal for me to do today, I want to be able to do years into the future, I have certainty that I can do this, isn't that what a development agreement is about? Yeah, so the development agreement would have the rights of an F40, F5, not form-based, there's nowhere in here that says form-based, so it doesn't say he can do anything to the county, right? Is that what you're saying?
You're asking a good question.
This is legal language, and the laws in Utah are that you depend not, hold someone to something that is not clear, and it is not clear.
So if, I think your question was related to asking for a rezone into that zone, and and that would be, even if the city adopted the form-based zone, it would be a rezone application that would be required, and totally a discretionary decision for the city whether or not to grant it.
Okay.
But if they didn't adopt it, then there wouldn't be any, I guess, I wouldn't see anything that would be mandatory for the city at that point.
Here's the thing, the language says county's vested laws, I'm fully aware that there's no city right now, the city has no adoption, means this, the ordinances of the county in effect of the effective date. What, okay, you know what makes me feel better, is if you write in parentheses, F40, F5, and you name the ordinances that are actually going to be allowed to be vested, rather than just saying the ordinances of the county.
When you say you.
Because that leaves it up to interpretation.
Yep, when you say you, let's take a step back, because this is not staff's proposal, we're just showing you what the applicant is asking for, so we can give him.
Developer agreement.
Yep, we can give him that feedback to say, hey, we want with specificity, identification of what is, in fact, what we could do is we could go back to the. In fact, what we could do is we could go back to the ask, did I say?
Was that a great idea?
I mean, it's, well, we do that in a lot of different development agreements as well, um, I don't like the agreements that say we're vested in. The four hundred page code that the county currently has, that's just, that's, that's tough sell for me, they've got to have a lot to offer for that. Um, but if they say, these are the provisions of the code that we want to be vested in.
Okay, so that's one of my feedback, I, I would want to see one point, two point six, to list the specific ordinances that would be vested in this.
You want them listed word by word, or by reference?
If you look at.
Because Charlie's saying, you don't like hot code as an attachment or exhibit to the wind. But that's, in essence, what has to happen.
Yeah, as much as me not liking it, we're, we've been doing it.
Unless the county has some way to keep track of ordinances twenty years ago.
Oh, that's smart.
Then attach a copy of current, the Weber County Code.
To the DA.
To the development agreement.
Yep, and if you were to pull Bridges, Eagle Press, Kobe, and now the exchange, if you were to pull, pull those reported development agreements. You'll find an entire copy of the county code attached to the back.
Same as Schiner Wampler, right above the vested rights paragraph is the definition of zoning. And that refers to F five and F forty, and so down below, I, I still think the county's vested laws is defined more broadly. But it talks about being vested with all rights to develop the property in accordance with county's vested laws. Including the provisions of the zoning, meaning F five and F forty. They would not be, well.
Are, I'm sorry, are you on two point one, because I was back on one point, two point six, are you?
Two point one, and then you look right above that, there's one point.
Got it, one point, two point one zoning.
That number looks wrong, but.
Yeah, that should be one point, two point.
Twenty, probably, yeah. So they do refer to the zoning as F five and F forty already, but.
My request stands. I, I see that, but my request still stays.
Okay, I, I do agree that it's risen more broadly in a way that refers to all of the county's existing ordinances. So, your point is to narrow it.
Yeah, we have examples in the past of developer agreements that were unclear on things, that have created issues after the fact. We should be as clear as we can be.
Charlie, would you tell me, for example, Kobe, how long is that?
It was either twenty or thirty years.
The new agreement, twenty, thirty years?
I pushed back pretty hard, we'll developer on that as well.
What about the, the most recent mixed use one?
The exchange, it's all the same.
Twenty, thirty years.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's either twenty or thirty, I, I can look it up, um, in a minute for you and get you a definitive answer, but. Plus the, um, uh, right for renewal as well, ten year renewal on top of that.
So the ten year is a personal preference, is nowhere in the code anywhere, and practice is, twenty or thirty years is not uncommon.
Or is it for us, now the exchange of incorporation?
Well, it depends, so if you look at the Snow Basin Development Agreement, you look at the Outer Mountain Development Agreement, those are prolonged periods. Nordic is longer as well, too.
Is there a positive, sometimes there are differences in how individual property owners. Application is treated and how large development is treated, is it possible that it's usually smaller developments are ten and larger, or longer?
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything to shy away from making that statement, because large developments are intended to provide. You know, obviously benefit to the developer, they want the security to know that they could do what they're investing in. But then the community, yep, uh, wants to know that they, so long this developer is developing. Will get the public benefits of the developer as, as promised, so sometimes that timeframe is, uh, worthwhile to extend. But when it's standardized development agreements, things for small subdivisions, traditional subdivisions. Uh, requests to be able to comply with the law in these particular ways. Um, not necessarily new rulemaking, those ones, um, I have a hard time going beyond ten years.
So this application has come through a few times, I think, did I have a, is this one of the ones that had a first. Round with you, and then a second round with us, is this one of those, that's what I, I remembered. So, uh, hold on, question's coming in my head. What did, in their agreement that they currently have, that it's been, like, whether it's the first round, or, you know, but not. Is there a length of time associated already with it?
Uh, yeah, so again, there's not an agreement right now, but it is a preliminary plat approval.
So the plat approval, but there's no, um, in that, he has, he has to start within two years, or it could be pulled. Or, because some of these have these kinds of things, right, you have to start a certain amount of time, is there, is there that with him?
Yes, so.
And what is that?
Vesting, um. He is vested, given the, the preliminary plat that he had approved. He is vested in the rules that exist right now governing final plat. And so he has one year after, is it one year after, no, I think it's a year and a half after, um, prelim. To plat the first phase, which, we already had the first phase platted, right?
Um, the first, yeah.
Yeah, first phase, so that means that, uh, after the first phase is platted as final plat. He has to plat a new phase every twelve months, in order for preliminary to remain vested. If he doesn't plat, this is just how our current codes, if he doesn't plat every twelve year, or sorry, twelve months, thank you. Um, then he loses that vesting and has to come back through the process, and he complains with whatever laws exist when he re-applys.
He would, if this didn't get agreed to.
Yes, yep, um, so, one of the things he's asking for, uh, is the timeframe. The other thing he's asking for is instead of every twelve months, I want it to be every thirty six months. Uh, so he's kind of giving up, he's still agreeable, and this is one of the reasons why I'm not. I'm not telling you don't do thirty years, because the applicant is still agreeable to having, uh, an expiration timeframe on that preliminary plat. It's just not, after one year of not plating, it'll be after three years of not filing, right? So let's say, six years from now, um, he's failed to file, well, let's just go three years, three years from now, he's failed to file another plat. At that point, if this is approved, um, his, uh. Vesting in the preliminary plan would be, uh, no longer there, and then if he wanted to do a subdivision on the same property. He would need to come in to the city at that point, and go through the city's process with the city.
Each lot is set up, would be plating individually, the way this is set up. How, how unorthodox is that? Or how common is?
Depends on, it, it depends on. The nature of the person who is doing the subdivision, that's, it's very uncommon for the developer. Uh, but, uh, for a farmer, that's very common for a farmer to do, plow one lot at a time, until all the kids have a lot.
This isn't farmland.
This is very challenging topography, though, and I think that's tied to the ask for this.
Well, and I think one of the things he wants to do is save this for the family.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean.
Which is like a farmer's words, so he's more akin to a farmer.
I'll tell you what I think, having had it, I sat through. I've sat through, uh, this, um. This is at least my third meeting, sitting through, listening to it, and such, and reading these nine asks. Um, hearing that there's fifty thousand dollar potential donation to trails, which is totally undefined, so fifty thousand dollars. Doesn't go very far if you're building up high, and doing the switchbacks, or doing the asphalt, ten feet wide, it doesn't go very far also. My take at this point in time, subject to hearing more, is I don't see why. The county would give up so much into the future, or so little. Given that these nine asks, and some of them seem pretty significant, for example. I know there's conflict between what the county today does and doesn't involve with the sewer and water. But the new incorporation probably, or may, in the future, be more engaged in that respect, especially as this valley develops more. So locking in forever sewer and water. You know, to wells and, and.
Septic.
Septic, to me, doesn't seem like it's in the, uh, best interest of the valley moving forward. And I just don't see what these nine asks, you know, stretching over thirty years, with so much uncertainty. That it makes sense to, um, to give up so much. Um, for so little in return, that's my take right now.
It's, it's my understanding from what he said, that he was going to make the contribution immediately.
Yes, but.
Yes.
But, but that's, it's, you don't know what you're getting, and there isn't a mechanism to manage that. And even if you had the cheapest trail possible, which is flatland dirt, it's probably not going to be. Fifty thousand dollars doesn't go very, that's not.
I don't, I don't think he's talking about trails on this property.
No, 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 somewhere else, but, and that's even a more black.
He's saying Mr. Willwright is anxious to take my fifty thousand dollars.
He would take fifty dollars, fifty thousand is somewhat meaningful, but it's not. You're not getting a lot of trail out of fifty thousand dollars in the valley, you're not getting very much, Charlie, you threw some numbers out.
Versus get is not substantial enough, is what.
But I, I don't say exactly what the county is giving up, this property belongs.
Giving up to.
You're giving up the.
Continuity.
Yeah.
It's continuity, it's thirty years of losing potential continuity with the rest of the valley. Regarding things we don't know about today. So you have to, I, I look at it as saying, you know, what's known today and what isn't known today. There's probably more not known today about future development in the valley than is actually known, especially with the incorporation taking off. And I just don't see the nine asks. As being substantiated by that small mountain trail, and Charlie.
I think, uh, if it's, if it's dirt trail, we're talking anywhere from a, a quarter mile to a couple of miles, depending on the terrain. Um, if it's, if we're talking about, uh, building a piney loop pathway, an asphalt pathway, we're talking about five hundred feet.
Yeah, so it, I mean, to me, that's, that's trivial. And the scheme of trails that we already have, and trail work that needs to be done, this is trivial.
Look, can I ask this, I, I remember there being discussions of what, the county commissioners wanting to get away. From developer agreements. So. What would make them want to make another developer agreement for this particular property?
Just a, a question of whether.
Asking for it?
Applicants asking, and question of whether or not the commissioners are comfortable with the give, um, that the applicant's willing to give. But ultimately, I think in, in these cases, I think the commissioners are going to put a lot of deference on what you guys, um, think here. And that's one of the reasons why I'm not giving you very strong or affirmative guidance on this, because. Um, I work for the county, and, and I'm going to continue to work for the county, and I don't want to give you guys strong guidance in these particular cases that. Um, the, the city would otherwise be strapped with for thirty years, if it was ten years, my conversation, you know, probably a little bit different for you. Um, you guys as city, future city residents, city, future city dwellers. Should be able to, uh, make that determination on what is appropriate for that city. But I'll tell you what I told the applicant, um, with the first round of the, of, with the first version that was proposed. I said, you, you have nine asks in here, uh, one of them is thirty years, and you're offering fifty thousand, I don't think it's enough. Um, and they said, we can't afford to do more than that, and I said, then maybe you can afford to add, reduce your asks. Yeah, now there, I don't know that the developer himself is pushing some of this stuff, I have seen this template language before. Um, very, um, indicative of a very specific, uh, law firm, um, who I've, I've worked with in the past. And so I kind of think that maybe the law firm doesn't fully understand or appreciate the situation that the developers in. Um, in, in making this ask, and so we pushed back, but we got, what we got back from them in reby, in revisions was number one. The very first version said that they, the fifty thousand dollar donation is upon plating of the last plat. Which is said, no, that, if that's thirty years from now, that fifty thousand dollars is going to be worth nothing, and the community has to deal with this without it. That's going to be a nonstarter, they came back and they said, no, no, we didn't mean it to be that way, it'll be before the first plat. So they changed it to that, but then instead of nine asks, they now have eleven.
So, Chair, I have a question, out of respect to you, Mr. Burton. I have a question, so let's just clear this away for a second. And this man has property yields, and then he wants to put homes on based on the density that's allowed today. By F five and F ten, there's no other acts, he just wants to build his own zone. And as long as it perks, and as long as everything else takes over, and he takes care of his own, own roads, right? Besides that, what would make it okay? In, in today's code, in today's law, his ask, what would be okay for? Because you have way more experience, this is the first time I've read this, I'm a little upset that I haven't been able to study this before I came here. So, I'm just curious, because you have some really strong feelings, so tell me, what this man has to be able to do to build on his own property?
I would say one of two ways, if it was with a development agreement, then it would be more in line with. It would be without all of the asks, so it'd be more in line with standard protocol or development agreements. It would not be for thirty years, so ten years with the ability to renew, uh, you know, every ten years. So either that, or as a standard subdivision, without the development. Well, whatever the. The appropriate subdivision, um, might just be, under today's rules, with today's vesting. Not extending it well into the future to lock in things that we don't know about today. So those, those would be the two traditional, typical pathways, where this is not typical.
What I'm hearing from here is that the, the thirty days is just not reasonable, thirty years, sorry, thirty days, thirty years, not reasonable.
That's unreasonable.
Is it reasonable for us to ask him to maintain his own rights?
That brings up something else, and I was going to ask the applicant a question after he speaks today.
I'll see him in the room.
Because it won't be an HOA, it would be, it would almost be better if we could do a cluster and then define, you know.
I don't see him here.
Okay, that's too bad, okay, keep going.
Yeah, so I have, and can I ask, Portland, um, previously about. Other, some litigation possibly surrounding other developments in this, uh, person's world. And, you know. This isn't, this developer, this person has done other developments, and he's tons of.
Okay, so you're looking into his background, are you turning him?
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to the extent I can, trying to anticipate potential issues and problems in the future. And, you know, incorporation might have to deal with in the future, so a concern I would have, if there's no HOA. If there's no legal teeth for somebody who ends up owning property in there, where there are private roads, what happens if those roads don't get plowed? That becomes a public safety issue. And I would have a concern, or I would want to know and understand what safeguards for public safety there would be in everyone.
Well, according to a lot of hearings, nothing, so.
I would want, I would want to know that, so, yes, if there are no public safety. Um, if, if, if there's no guarantees that the public safety would be maintained in those. Under those circumstances, then I would put it in favor in any way, other than by public or municipally. Municipality managed road, I wouldn't want to see a private road in there. Unless there was some guarantee that that road would be maintained and kept open.
Which I've seen some major ways of going, live up to their, you know, and that's hard to, hard to import.
Yeah, but at least if, if, if there are legal teeth.
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Question on, on safety in that, in that scenario specifically, um, is, uh, why the state code talks about compelling, countervailing public interest? Does the county have the right to, um, enter private property to help save people, um, from avalanches, or whatever the issue is? Or to plow people out of a seventeen foot, uh, snowdrift, because the HOA hadn't been total covered? Um, so that's going to be up to that legislative body in the future to make that decision. Uh, but if they do decide that there is a compelling, countervailing public interest for this, uh, city to do that. There's also the ability for the city to recoup its costs in doing that, um, just by recouping it from those landowners.
That's messy.
It is.
So I, I would think, I would hope the county, at this juncture, would want not create potential messy situations for the new, um. City government. City government.
I'll tell you, my recommendation when it comes to street is the more public streets you have, the better. There are counter arguments to that. Can one counter argument being a long term operational maintenance that becomes instead of an HOA obligation, a taxpayer obligation. But there's a reason why public streets are advisable in most circumstances with a couple of caveats. One caveat being a very long dead end road. That's probably not in the best interest of the public to have that be um a public street. But ones that do make connections, public streets making connections to surrounding property owners gives those surrounding property owners the opportunity to. Uh have uh cross your or cross um boundary access without having to go through. Uh the hoops to uh try and work with the other HOA or whatever. Uh and it just tends to yield a better connected community when it comes to um. Uh, street connectivity or pathway connectivity, which um. There's a lot of pros to that. There's there's obviously a lot of pros to dead end roads that go to exclusive hamlets, but there's a lot of pros to having. Strong connectivity, including safety and egress and that.
See that? That's one reason they brought up. This is kind of a unique layout. This isn't flatlands. This is mountains. There probably won't be any connectivity.
They have, they have those some, so we take a look.
Have to go according to fire, the fire department, they have to have.
Except these lots up here, you got a long dead end road.
Yes.
Well, that's not uncommon.
That's probably the only way.
Yeah, and the county code, when it comes to those long dead end roads, it's been changed to say that. Um, a dead end road that provides no public benefit and only is for the best, the interests of those surrounding landowners. Shall be private. It says shall be, uh, cause the county doesn't wanna have to own and offer it set. Um and I think the city would probably be in the. Now, if that goes to a trailhead or the, you know, the public land beyond that, there's an argument to say that maybe there's some public interest in that being public. Uh operated, maintained for the benefit of everyone. But if not.
This is a dead end road.
Dead end road, yep.
And what's the code say about how many homes can be on a dead end road?
Fifteen, fifteen without an egress. Yeah.
And we have thirty?
No.
No, no, okay.
So take a look at the uh preliminary, you could see how.
Did you remember us discussing? The egress was back in an in an old meeting.
I I did count the number and.
So that we can. And I hope we read our time. One more question after you're done. No, that's fine. Yes, well, I'm not saying get off of this because we haven't even, well, I guess at least not here, but we haven't. Even asked for them to speak, but. Is he hoping this is on the agenda in a couple of weeks?
I told him that I don't think we have the answers we need to get him on that agenda, but if he's insistent on it being on the agenda. Then we'll get it on there. He should probably prepare for a no answer.
Well, we have the ability table deny.
He has not requested the final decision within forty five days.
And is it past the deadline to do so?
No, there's not a deadline.
So he could ask for it. Uh, another question on that is, um, oh gosh, my mind, um. So whether or not it's on the next agenda and then uh you have, so similar to a reason with the developer agreement, he has the right to request it. He does not have the right to receive it.
Legislative action.
Understood. And so uh if he doesn't get this approved. Where is he at? He has a plat that's already, two plats, I believe, that are already. Preliminary approved?
When's the last time his last plat was?
February thirteenth of this year.
So he hasn't till February already plat, another phase. And he could do one lot at a time. It's just one more.
vested rights. It's just not for thirty years. So if this is denied, he still can do his project and continue to come back. We and we can, it doesn't have to be that straight up and down. It could be, will allow um you to go from one year to three years. But you have to continue to come back.
Yep.
Just not the set thirty all of such stuff.
Okay.
Yep. So there's a little bit of maneuvering.
I ironically, if it's uh if it's thirty years and it's thirty lots, technically, he could be vested for thirty years as long as he plats one every single.
As long as he's consistent.
And he wouldn't need a development agreement to do that, but.
The nice thing about the development agreement, Sharon, is that we can also ask for things. And so we could go and say, we want, you know, waterless landscape. You know, and and there's just some things we can do.
No, understood.
Okay, so I have, with respect to you, I'm gonna ask legal on something. So Mr. Barber brought up um that he had looked into this man's past and. Kind of alluded that he was.
He has some legal issues.
Has legal issues, correct? Are we allowed to make a decision on that standing? Does that, will that get us as planning commissioners in trouble? Or or is that something we're supposed to consider? I've never known that we could consider that.
So the first thing I would say to that is this is a legislative recommendation, ultimately a legislative decision. And so the courts are going to look at it with a very. Deferential standard to what the county commission ends up deciding and.
So even if we say no, based on that, it's not gonna get us in trouble.
But it.
It could. I think it could.
If a court were to decide that that was not something that was, you know, reasonably debatable to be furthering the public interest. I mean, that's a paraphrase of the standard they use, but um I would. Say that, you know, I have only heard hearsay as to potential lawsuits and maybe he has prevailed on all of them. I don't know. Um, and that's not something I would have any reason to look into or find out. So it might be. Premature to make any decision based on hearsay as far as, you know. We heard this and and maybe we know that he has been in some litigation and maybe you even know the outcome of that. But um also keep in mind each case is very fact specific and I think it could be. Uh. Maybe something to really think hard about before basing a decision on that.
Okay, so I I agree with so much of what you said and it was just leeway into. What we can do and what we can request. They just don't want us to get in trouble by making.
Everybody's, everybody's vote is their individual.
Yes.
Vote when it comes down to it. And for me, looking at public safety issues or or going into this without an HOA or where. People in the future wouldn't have much recourse. If there's a pattern of behavior out there that is verified, I don't know if it is or isn't. Then for me personally, that's a, you know, a factor amongst many, especially when you have so many asks and so little, you know.
Mr. Barber, I did chase down that question from an internal perspective. Um, from a planning perspective, I think he's complied with everything he was supposed to on his past developments. Um, from a engineering pers- perspective, the engineering division said. There was one item that was a little bit of a trouble spot and it was regarding, I think it was a pump house that was in the public right of way. At the end of the day, the pump house or excuse me, the engineering division said, we're not gonna push too hard on this because there are a lot of challenges regarding moving that. So uh it's a low volume road. They weren't too worried about it. So uh from legal obligation perspective to the county. I don't know that we have noticed anything that's a big challenge, but I have heard um other concerns.
What's the impact on fire and emergency services on? This type of of plan? You know, no, no HOA. The developer maintains the roads or whatever. What if they can't get in there? What if there's a fire at the end of the road?
That's another reason why um I usually advocate for public streets when they make sense. Now, at the end of the dead end street, it's really the dead end street is a shared private driveway for. I think it's four.
It also has to be approved by fire.
Right.
That has, that 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 comes before. So it's based on those approvals.
Sure.
So they're watching out.
Okay.
And if the fire truck can't get there, they can't get there. And I mean, it.
Yes.
As far as the liability thing, it's probably not so much that, but at least. From the fire district's perspective or the county or the planning commissioner's perspective, from a liability issue, you know, on the side of the landowners, the homeowners. Uh, yeah, if I lived there, I'd be very concerned about having egress constantly available to me.
What you just mentioned, so fire and emergency services do weigh in or have visibility to to this.
Yep, and I think they have weighed in on the road configuration.
Yeah, there's been a lot of back and forth about the percentage of grains up there. So I think they've landed somewhere that's that is okay with. Fire, I can't recall what that is because preliminary approval was given probably about four years ago, four or five years ago. And they'll continue to work with fire and engineering as each subdivision plot comes before them and each set of engineered plans comes before them.
Are you both working on this?
I'm doing the current planning side of it, so the subdivision part of it. And he was working on subdivisions before he came in and asked for this. So kind of been working together to make sure nothing's missed.
We always both work on everything.
Yeah.
We cross the hall from each other. I hear her phone conversations.
Well, something don't happen. Each coin has two sides, right? So there's concern, we don't wanna give him thirty years. And then pops into my mind the general plan. We ought to keep things open for a long time. So the other side of the coin is, aren't we glad we got somebody that wants to extend it over thirty years so we don't have to look at development up there? For the next thirty years. Developer could come in and and develop this all out in a year.
The only development you're gonna see up there, and I was up there in this home, are the lots that are already with for sale signs on and along the road.
Right.
You're not gonna see any of this.
No.
Back in there, whether it's all built tomorrow or in thirty years.
No. But the point is. Extending something this won't be built on for years and years, that kind of fits with the general plan. Just an observation. Okay, we got open space for all this time. Or we could have a developer put it all in today. You know, we got it all today and we got the extra traffic today.
Well, his vested right isn't that he has to build thirty today. His vested right is that he has to. Continue to.
Yeah.
On a steady basis.
And making.
Right, I hear you.
Side of the coin. And we like to delay the development. This driving us crazy with construction vehicles today.
I just don't see it as a delay. I see it as locking in. Um, I don't, yeah, I don't see that as a delay. But that's just my perception. And you and I, I accept your point. Did you have questions you wanted to say?
Yes, to with that.
Uh, one quick correction, looks like it's not thirty years, it's twenty five years. So take a, take a, take a five year breath.
On purpose, last fifty, now it's forty.
Look at that, we we came down. Hard negotiator. Okay, um, let's go through the rest of the asks. Um, now we're on ask number three, so uh the paragraph five point two final plat deadlines, this is what we told you. Instead of a new final plat every twelve months, it'll be a new five final plat every three years. Okay? Um.
Sorry, what number you want?
That's five point two.
Yeah.
Hey, ask number four, increase phasing timelines. Let's see, sorry, hang on.
That's the one to three.
Yeah, I might have conflated things. Additional admission, oh, okay. Resent denied, developed application reasons for deny. Okay, so um at the very top of that same page. And it's part of the previous pages, number nine, under notices. Um. Sorry. Previous page, five, uh section five point one, processing of development applications and county denial of. Uh, development. Uh, now this would. Just replace the word county with city um in six columns from Biden turned out. Uh, what they're asking for at the end of that sentence is above and beyond what is currently the county's obligation. So basically, if if they're asking for the county to give reasons why. Um, the county is uh uh has made uh denials. Uh, to administrative application. Now, we will give findings for reason why we deny. We'll give uh. Uh, a notice of decision and all that, but what this is asking of uh the future city is above and beyond what we are. So my comment there, this is another ask, and this is just an additional administrative burden burden on that government. Um, so one more thing that.
If you deny somebody, you're giving findings.
Yep.
One thing that's there is that the county agrees to table a final decision on development application rather than issuing a denial.
Yep. So it takes out your ability to deny because you're giving him. Like, let's work together rather than just.
Yep, table in order to give them an opportunity to address any issues.
Yep, and and you're saying the county would not normally ever agree to this.
Um, doesn't mean that we won't do it.
No, I.
It just, yeah, it just means that we're not, but there's a reason it's not already part of the code.
Yeah.
So the next thing is it requires a meet, meet and confer.
It seems like a good faith, isn't it, out of the end?
Could be.
If you deny him, say, okay, there's, if you can fix this, then take a look at it, yeah.
Yeah, and in practice, that is what we do now. However, um. We do it because we work well with our applicants as well as with the public. We try and deal with these things. Um, reasonably, but we have under some circumstances had. Personality challenges who come in and try and really push things uh to the limit. Um, having this written this way would allow them to push that, at least to the limit of what's here. Um, making the county um react or behave in a certain way in order to stay in compliance with his agreement.
County and city, cause you said the language of county would be city.
Yep, it's.
This is pure good faith. We're gonna deny it. Why? Well, because we didn't do this. Well, if I do this. Oh, sure. That's all you're saying.
Yep. But I don't disagree with you.
I don't, I don't see a problem.
What's what subsidies uh or jurisdictions do in those cases is say, you're denied. Therefore, that's a final decision on your application. You're no longer vested in whatever that application is. Start over.
Start over.
And then they have to go back through the process and ask the question a slightly different way.
And government's supposed to be there to serve the public, not to slap people down.
Yep.
And put burdens on them that are unreasonable.
Yeah, I'm not telling you that this paragraph is a bad paragraph. I'm just telling you it's an additional commitment that's above and beyond what we already have.
Even pointing at.
It says, son, you do it in practice already.
We do.
But you're saying if we don't like the guy, we don't have to do it in practice.
Potentially happening.
Which is kind of a bad thing for government to be saying.
It it's not if you don't like the guy. It's if, it's if the guy.
Accurate representation.
I wish I could give you all the information.
I'm just thinking of equal lethal protection arguments that would get you in a lawsuit.
That, I understand that.
If you do this, you're not gonna have a problem.
Yep, I agree. And that's why we do this uh on a, on a routine basis. Um, there, there has been some litigation that the county has been involved in um on uh properties out west. Uh, where um it was a very litigious individual that's really spent a ton of taxpayer dollars. Um, from our attorney's office to our engineer's office to our planning office that um. Didn't. Had. We did always have the ability to say, sorry, we're not dealing with this anymore. Start over. We. In good faith, tried to extend and negotiate and remedy um and give them opportunities to fix and fix and fix. Um, and that turned into really administrative uh challenge that was very costly. And had we known that with that particular circumstance, my suspicion is we would have made very different and more decisive decisions upfront. But we do know the county has needed from the county commissioners to be customer service oriented applicants or customers, taxpayers or customers. And so for the most part, with very few exception, we apply this in practice.
Say the whole thing. So county agrees to table right after they say they want an explanation why they deny. Then right in that same paragraph, county agrees to table final decision. I don't like that.
So you can't deny, you've got a table, and then if you table, give them time to remedy the situation.
Right away from a lot of officials. That doesn't have to be because the legislative body can still. Do not. Tape, no, it can still table and work with and come back if they choose to. You cannot is putting handcuffs on that don't need to be.
Yeah, I don't like that.
Only one caveat is this is regarding administrative applications, not legislative applications, but you're right.
This is a website.
City, sorry.
But it's referring in the contract to an administrative application.
Yeah, it's referring to.
Right in front of us is legislative, it's referring to an administrative.
Like subdivision approvals. Yeah, uh so.
So where is that? Is that stated?
Uh, if I, section five point one. Uh, so section five is processing of development applications. Section five point one, the title is. Processing of development applications, county denial of development application. But it just adds some extra stuff that uh above and beyond what the county is required by law to do right now. Which includes.
County required by law, by its, its law.
Its law, state law.
State law.
Well, it's above and beyond state law, above and beyond county law. It's, it's just an additional commitment that the county would be making. On behalf of the city and the city would be stuck.
That's contractual law.
Yeah.
It's creating law.
See, this is a contract, a contract that implied government of. Oh, good faith, have good faith.
Okay.
And so to slap somebody down is not good faith.
I don't see it as slapping somebody.
I don't either. I see it as our need to. Stay in control of what we have, what we do. It's our job to be clear.
Stay in control of what we have, what we do, it's our job to be clear. Okay.
I also see this paragraph as boiler, boilerplate language that this particular attorney puts in most of their uh. It just happens to be new for some reason in this version and.
This is applicant written contract, it doesn't mean that it's what needs to be.
Right.
So can we continue because we have other items as well, let's continue.
Okay, so, okay, increase phasing, let's see, developer ask number five.
Feel like they're all gonna be long, so. So where are you now?
Uh, I'm in, uh, I'm looking at the, the right hand column on the next page, says developer ask number five. So I took these notes a few weeks ago, so increase the time allowed to complete a phase, okay, so. The one uh, comment above says, instead of plating every one year, uh, this would allow them to platter every three years. The next comment down says, uh, instead of being required to finish uh, the development, the phase within two years. Um, they want to be extended to three.
He's extending each individual part. But is the total third?
Phase or house?
He says face.
Um, the smallest phase that this is saying that he can do is one law.
Okay.
So he could do a thirty lot subdivision, thirty lots.
Next step. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um. Next note down as a supplement to ask number four, um, not just. It's not just that he has to plat uh, every three years, it's that after three years has lapsed. The jurisdiction will give him additional seventy-five days, so.
Just.
Just how it's written.
Okay.
And I have the same question, why, uh, three years is three years. Um, I struggle with stuff like this because development agreements, they're not um, as public facing as the code is. It's not online, it's not codified, it's usually recorded to the property and someone has to track that. So that could be administrative challenge.
So, question, so legal has gone through this?
I don't know, it's been fine tooth comb.
I have not gone through it in a lot of detail, I glanced through Charlie's comments and I have not provided a detailed review.
Okay, and you would before we would get it in final four.
Yes.
Okay, and we will have it numbered by the lines.
I, I can ask the applicant to do that.
Thank you.
I can't guarantee they will, but.
That's fifty-five, also, okay, so. Where are we now, CE twelve?
Eleven.
Ask number six?
Yeah, eleven, so comment eleven.
Septic and Wells, twenty-five years.
But I'm, I'm one comment above, um, upsizing and reimbursement to developer seven point two.
What do you mean by upsizing?
Uh, well, if, so through development um, approvals, the jurisdiction can require a developer to put in bigger infrastructure than is needed by their subdivision. However, the difference, the, the level of service increase that they're putting in, that is not demanded by their development, has to be paid for by that jurisdiction. Um, so a lot of times jurisdictions will use impact fees or whatever, but we could say, you know what? Yes, the science says your subdivision needs a twenty inch pipe, we want a thirty inch pipe to uh, uh, provide for issues that. Yep, and we will pay the difference. Now, that's, there's, that's already the default, we're talking about, we can't do illegal exactions, we have to, whatever exaction we do from the developer has to be roughly proportionate, essentially really. Essentially linked to the project, and so it's already the default case law, I really don't think uh, section seven point two is needed. This is not an additional ask, this is just them refining, I think, how that case law um, would be applicable in this case, so. I'm just suggesting that it not even be in there.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so ask number six, um, they are asking for us to commit to septic in Wells for the project for the next twenty-five years. So I'm not sure this is a wise commitment for the county to make, and the reason for that. Um, is because the county doesn't control septic in Wells. That's uh, the health district that does that in conjunction with Weaver Basin and, and the state engineer, so.
And I've, columns reported, which talks about not doing this, okay.
Yep.
Next one. Any other questions, Vincent?
Hey, Devin. Uh, this one, I always giggle a little bit, this, this is very clearly for a city, not for a uh, unincorporated county area. So seven point four, uh, the title of that paragraph is county services. Basically, what that paragraph says is that the county agrees to provide the same level of service uh, to this project as it does to any other project that's in the county. My response is, that makes a lot of sense for a flat city on this side of the mountain. But on that side of the mountain, um, if you were in the, the seventeen foot snowdrifts up in Powder Mountain a few years back. Um, that's a very different circumstance up there, and so the terrain, the topography, the local microclimates, they're very different. And I don't think we should commit to the exact same level of service.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if we could refine this, maybe it's the level of service reasonably provided uh, to similar, similarly situated votes, is how I would revise that. Okay. Uh, developer ask number eight, attorney fees. In the event there is conflict, uh, see the parties prevailing in any action brought to enforce the terms of this agreement shall be awarded to. Shall be awarded its reasonable legal expenses, meaning if, if the county loses in whatever legal conflict we have, the county pays for their attorney.
Right.
We've never agreed to that, we've never done that, our standard is everybody pays for their own attorney unless the judge tells us. Yep. Okay, I'm making progress, number nine.
Yeah.
Appeal of administrator's findings, that proposal does not qualify as an administrative modification, so. This, uh, you a little bit of explanation, um.
So again, this is a new right that does not currently exist.
Yes.
So I want to be held to all the current ordinances with the addition of these rights that don't currently exist.
Correct, yep, uh, as, as I mentioned before that you didn't like, it's rulemaking.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so um, when it comes to making amendment to this legislatively adopted development agreement. What they're proposing and, and their developer, or excuse me, their attorney um, does this pretty frequently, is two types of modifications. One modification would be administrative. If it's routine, uncontested, if it's very germane to the development and isn't going to cause significant problems. Wouldn't make the um, decision for this development agreement to go into place be any different if we had known at the time. Um, those kinds of decisions can be made by the administrator, and in this case, administrator would be the planning director. Um, however, planning director has the full authority, punt it onto the planning commission and the county commission if necessary. So the planning director says this is not routine and uncontested. Um, but this needs to go to the planning commission, there needs to be more, maybe public eyes on this, um, they could do that. What this says is that the applicant can appeal Rick's decision, Rick's finding. That the proposal does not qualify as administrative modification, so Rick says, hmm, this is not an administrative modification, this needs to go through the full. Um, development agreement process, that means a public hearing, that means you guys get to talk about it, it means county commissioners get to talk about it. Um, it means the public get to come and express their concerns in those meetings, um. This is creating a different kind of appeal that we don't even have in our code. Um, the, the state code doesn't even specify, so I'm not particularly comfortable with it, but if, if you guys are okay with it.
Well, absolutely not.
Okay.
But that's just me.
No, I do, number ten.
Well, I think I started to, I think I started to explain this one on another paragraph, so. Um, what this does, so if it is a modification application, it's the big one, uh, they're coming through the planning commission after public hearing, they're going to the county commission after public hearing to talk about this. What they're asking for with this, these sentences is basically that the county commissioners. Need to make findings that they believe the modification application is not consistent with the intent of this agreement and or the county's vested laws. That changes a legislative decision almost over to an administrative decision.
Hmm.
So, no, and I could, I could make an argument based on how this is written, that what they're asking for. Is for the county to only be able to say no to a modification under certain circumstances, so. Um, to me, that was a big no, but you guys tell me if you want that to happen. Just kidding, any of those can be a no.
Okay.
Exclusion from moratorium, last page, um, I am suggesting they delete that, I do not know. How that will, what implications that would have for the county commissioners to agree that the city. Will, will not apply a moratorium to this, and I don't think we should go out of our way to advocate that.
Okay, so thirteen seven years opposed to the whole paragraph or the highlighted?
Um, mostly the highlighted portion, um, I don't like the idea that the county commission shall provide written determination advising the applicant of the reasons for the denial, but. Um, we do that anyway, I, I say I don't like that there's a shall there, it's on the record, the minutes are that decision. Uh, the audio is that decision, uh, this is just one extra thing that the commissioners need to do, but. I do think there is some good faith communication requested here, so I would just put a period at the end of denial.
And that might tend to prevent future litigation.
Mm-hmm.
If it's unclear what the denial.
Yep.
Might invite litigation if it's specifically set for.
Yep, and I can almost guarantee if uh, our attorney's office receives notice of uh, litigation and. They have uh, all that information, they're gonna come back and go, why did we make the decision we made? And they'll put it on the record anyway at that time, so um. These guys just wanted up, up front, which I think that's okay, so maybe we put a period at the end of denial, let's strike the rest of it. So to sum up.
You got one more, the last eleven here, last one. You said you missed it, I'm very bad, jeopardize, I've been telling.
Thank you. Oh, it's, it's still, it's part of exclusion from moratorium.
Oh.
So, sorry, there's something wrong with the formatting, but.
Needs to be included on twenty-five.
Yep.
Oh, I see, actually, you changed it to twenty-five, yeah. Part of the more time.
Yeah, that is weird, I don't know why I do that, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, um. Is the give, so let's just say we strike all the stuff that you guys had challenges with, and I think I just took the general sentiment of the group here. Um, is the give commensurate if you subtract out the ones that you guys are okay with?
I can subtract the things I'm not okay with, there's no.
There's nothing left.
No left, so.
That, that they could go, go ahead and give twenty-five thousand dollars, period?
This contract, there, he could come back and say, listen, if not for that, then let's talk about extending one years to, one year to three years, right? But. But there's quite a bit in here that I've written no next to. So.
Do you want to give?
I'm one person.
Do I give them guidance like that, to say, hey, we'd be okay with this, but we're not okay with what you're asking for as a whole?
Can you back to the words actually, because I got this, we haven't had a chance to digest.
So this one should be in your inbox, I, yeah, I sent this out two weeks ago, right after the last meeting.
At the beginning of this meeting, you said, I, I asked you, and you said, no, I just got this hot off the presses.
Yes, just now.
Yeah.
Beginning of this meeting, you said.
Uh, sorry, I was referring to the next one, this one is.
I never got this.
It was, it was right after the last meeting I sent it out, okay.
I got, I got a letter with a map attached to it, it was all I know.
I asked for comments and I didn't get any, so I thought that was kind of suspicious, so maybe it didn't go out.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I didn't see this, I definitely have to go through this, I can speak for myself, I mean, one commissioner of seven. I'm not likely to vote for this at all, uh, there's a lot of no's that I've written down, um, if he is willing to. Come back and you have been show up to a work session and have a discussion, for me, on, on my personal opinion. We could. It's not a, just a blanket no, we could work with things, but if it's just this, my answer is no.
Yes.
If I, if I had to make a decision today, I'd feel the same way, I don't want to say no, I want to say yes, based on these things, and this is what we wanted to do.
Yeah.
I, I want him to be able to build on his property, but I want to protect us as well.
Okay, I'll confer with the applicant, um, see if he's comfortable, instead of any kind of decision meeting in the next meeting, just go into a, a work session at the end of the block, so. If you guys are okay with that.
Charlie, why he wasn't here?
Mm-hmm, no idea.
Yeah, because, Madam Chair, I don't like staff presenting all those things, that should be something the applicant works at.
They opened this whole meeting, explaining to the audience that this is something applicants request, because they want to get our feedback and he's not here.
Yeah.
This, this one's, this one's just a little bit different, because I am the one who reviewed this, going through saying, I don't think the planning official is gonna be okay with this. So I wanted to ask the planning commission specifically if you're okay with any of the things that I pointed out. Uh, so it would have been the, we, we would have done it this way last meeting, uh, if I hadn't gotten away late, I apologize again for that, but it's probably good, considering how late we ended the last meeting, but.
Didn't we have this in our packet last time when he appeared?
You did.
For the last word session.
Yep, and he had a memo associated with it, yep.
Yeah.
But it wasn't what was discussed last time, well, I have to go back and re-listen, that was.
Yeah, we, we went through all this last time with him here, answering questions. It falls right into his mind.
Uh, no, no, not your fault, and honestly, my fault that I didn't. Yeah, but somebody had some questions and I, I just got stuck in the other room, I should have been more forceful to.
And I'm happy to make comments, so that next meeting will be quicker.
So that could be helpful as well, um, refer back to, I'll, I'll go through um, my emails and then try to figure out why you didn't get yours, but.
Well, if you send in the PDF form that I can make comments on, that would be really helpful.
Do you want word or just PDF?
PDFs that I can, that I can call my own.
If, I can make that happen, um, also refer back to the packet from last week, there's a memo that's.
Yeah, I saw it. I mean, that's just me, I would just prefer a PDF, I don't love any videos, whatever, whatever the others says. Okay. And this was. First item on our work session.
Yeah.
And, and he was here and we talked to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the development agreement was attached, just replacing them.
Yeah. I got it here.
Well, even if you were, as he was here last time, with all these adjustments and all these concerns.
They're just, we didn't discuss any of the comments.
Obviously wasn't discussed well enough, so I don't think it really matters, whatever, I don't know, the fact is, we're here when we're here, and we've got what we've gotten.
Well, and, and that work session was led by applicants, each one was here, we sat back and said, what would you like to talk about?
I mean, that was the purpose of him coming to that meeting, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
To explain what he wanted to do.
Yep.
And get, take the planning commission on what he was proposing.
Sometimes it's hard, and I say this with them out in the room, but I think I'd say it here anyway, sometimes it's hard for an applicant or someone who doesn't want to hear. Uh, the facts of the case to not ask the quest, the hard questions, so I'm not surprised, um, I wish I was here to ask you guys those hard questions, so you could have had that discussion.
When did you add the comments?
These comments are in your last packet as well.
Okay, so these comments were all there for us to see.
Yeah, what, what July?
I got the email from Charlie on July twenty-third, and it does look like it has the planning commissioners' names. So there may be an email in your inbox from July twenty-third.
It might not have spanned for some reason.
It might have.
Because I'm not, but I'm not.
You have me on your spam list?
I probably think Charlie just, I have a hard copy, but I pulled all these old things, I have a hard copy here, but it has no kind of stuff, it's just a copy of the.
That was in the memo, you're right, you're right, staff comments.
So, round three, this is, this is something that was there, but there are no comments.
Yeah, and that's why, that, that, that's why the email went out right after the meeting, uh, that had the one with comments.
Nobody in this room, I think, was comfortable with saying yes, so you want something done, he's gonna have to wait a little bit. I hate to make people wait, I really do, but.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, I, I do too, I do too, okay.
I think, I think he still has some time to get a finer decision, maybe he still wants to have it, I mean, he's gonna say.
Is it, with that discussion, unless somebody feels they are not being represented with that, because we don't all have to agree. Is it uh, appropriate to move to item two? Can we do that? Item two, work session. Item two, discussion regarding files E D A twenty twenty-four dash zero six. This was started in twenty twenty-four?
Interesting.
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay, oh boy.
Okay, actually, I, I think it was started back in twenty eighteen, um, but uh, it was resubmitted again.
But there was nothing to provide for us to read ahead of time.
If, if, if only, in fact, uh. Getting, getting my eyes on this, I just barely got a chance to scan this earlier today, so. Uh, but I do know the issues and I know the concerns, um, let's invite all the city folks, who we still have in here.
So the two items you're passing out, right?
Uh, yep, two items that we'll pass out, thank you.
That, you're okay, and walk up there.
There's probably a good spot for you.
There's. You ready to screen the audience or?
No, no. I so I'm gonna hand these to Rick and then he can hand them out after they've been talking. So, yeah, I've got some handouts here. Just to preface this, this is kind of give it some some background. I'm Brady Hurdham, the Water Utility Director for Ogden City, so twenty five forty nine Washington Boulevard. Address of business. With that, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk to you this evening. Yeah, like I said, I'll give these to Rick and then we can disperse those after we go through this to kind of bring some context into what we're discussing is a transferable development, development agreement. The reason we're discussing this is kind of setback in history. Ogden City, say, back in eighteen eighty three, when the first rail cart was headed up Ogden City or up Ogden Canyon. There was an Artesian park up in Eden Valley or Ogden Valley. As part of that that service Weaver County as well as the city, and then you step forward into nineteen thirties, later in the nineteen thirties, there was a dam being proposed to be built. Being Pineview Dam. At that point in time, the those wells were repurposed or relocated, if you will, to make way for the the dam. Then you fast forward to nineteen fifty seven into nineteen seventy. The the dam was being expanded by Weaver Basin, and then the wells were also relocated again. So as you currently would know it, Browning Point at the end of Stringtown Road in Eden is where our current well sites, there are six wells that currently service Weaver County as well as Ogden City residents and ratepayers as we currently is the current stance. So with that, knowing that those wells have been in operation for many, many years, as well as us being conscious and strategically wanting to protect water quality as well as those sources of water we had purchased in twenty seventeen. Just over twenty four acres of property that is on the north end before those wells currently reside on Browning Point. As part of that purchase, we had had all the rights associated to it. There was water rights, there was franchise agreements, there was a bunch of rights that came with it. At that time, this property was zoned as a CBR one. When we purchased the property, and so being that your predecessors would have zoned it as such as a CBR one. The valuation and coordination of that property and the purchasing of it in our minds with as we went through the appraisal process would have been considering considering development rights into the future as as we purchased that property. And so stepping forward to today, ever since twenty nineteen, like Charlie, Charles had already touched on. We'd gone through some appraisal processes in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, and then twenty seventeen into twenty eighteen, we even purchased the property. Knowing that a lot, all those vested rights would have come with it. Obviously, we want to protect the sources of of water that we have because there's over ninety thousand people that are are reliant on that. With that, we that's why we're here to try and best these development rights. We feel that as we went through the appraisal process back in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, in this agreement, we we show that there's two two dwellings that are about seventy five square feet or seventy five hundred square feet, and those would be two units, and then the rest of the units, there'd be about five hundred and nineteen units at two thousand square feet apiece, which equates to about five hundred and twenty one units of transferable development rights that we feel that were established as part of the purchase of this property.
Explain that to me in detail, please. Twenty four acres, right?
Yes, yes.
Could you explain for the audience, for me, and whoever else, how twenty four acres yields five hundred and seventy dollars in that?
So based on the densities and how that was zoned, in talking with our legal department, that's they were able to step through and more or less establish those square footages on the density of two thousand year or two two thousand square.
Go back, you give give us the nuts and bolts of that, right down to the basics.
Brady, you've got you got a table in that paragraph three.
Do you guys have that one?
That's which one? We've got two documents. There was paragraph three of the.
One that says draft.
Which one? So back of page one of the agreement, the draft.
Yeah, so so everybody on that page, it's this table, they don't see that. So twenty four acres divided by that one million, or yeah, the one million square feet. Ultimately, as you break those out into the different units, you can see that we did on the first two dwelling units, it being seventy five square feet, which we would see those as two two units at that. And then on the dwelling units, we said two thousand square feet, which ultimately means just over one million, which as we divide that out on two two thousand square feet on that one million, that gives us five hundred and nineteen units. So in total, between those those two, we ultimately felt like between the the units that are seventy five hundred square feet and the two thousand square foot units, that equates to five hundred and twenty.
When you say square feet, you mean land.
Yeah, square footage of site area.
Of, yes, yes. Yes. Yes.
Because it's commercial.
Yeah, it's zoned as commercial, residential, recreational. And so based off of the assessments of the appraisals that were done at the time, that's how we came to these numbers on those square footages as part of the valuation of that property. So.
Why I handed that second document out to you guys, so you can see what the CBR one zone says. The square footage tabulation is close to the back, one of the one of the last couple of pages. It's a unique way to do it, and your F your FR three and your CBR one zone does it almost the exact same. You have to you have to reverse engineer your way into what that density is.
Sure.
So does does the county agree with those numbers?
Yes, the when I say agree, I'm saying that if someone, if the city or whoever owns the property comes in proposes some kind of a recreation resort development on that property, builds one building, because it's seventy five hundred square feet per building. So if there's two buildings, you're actually going to get less density by some degree, three buildings, even less than that. But if it's one single building with on that property and they maximize that, then they could pull the five hundred and twenty.
Okay. But that's not that's not five hundred and twenty one individual homes. You're saying that would be a recreational facility in a building.
Uh, no, we are talking about residential units.
But in a, yes, that's separate.
Yep.
Entity.
Yep, you got it.
The CBR one allows a building height of fifty feet, and you're gonna put five hundred and twenty one units in a fifty foot building. I'm just asking.
Twenty four acre property. Now, I'm not saying that that
Okay.
I'm not saying that that is how it will go. What I'm saying is if the owner of the property came to the county today under today's laws and said, we're gonna build one building, it's gonna be fifty feet tall, and we're gonna have five hundred and twenty one units in that building. The county would not be able to say no, as long as there is sewer and water being provided.
Right. Which, okay. Question, like just one quick second. I was listening to you, and in the same breath, as you said, we've purchased twenty four acres to protect our wealth. You then mentioned something about with the interest or with the knowledge of development, right? So those things seem contradictory to me. You purchased the land to protect your wells.
Correct.
If you're not building on it, but development rights have to do with anything.
Because the property was valued with those development rights, so.
So that was the cost of what you purchased to get land to protect your wells. I understand that.
Our ratepayers paid for that cost, and we've had to pay an exorbitant amount more because those were evaluated into the value of that property. So by by that, and we don't know what the future will hold either for this site, especially with water quality, right? It's our intent to protect our water quality at this site as well as the source protection around this site. If and when in the future, I don't know, sixty, hundred years down the road, if we don't lock up some of these rights now investing them, what options does that leave people down the road?
So you just mentioned protection zone, right? Drinking water protection there. So there's language. Uh, there's setback specifications. How does that eat into the twenty four acres?
The source water protection? If they have a sewer system, it doesn't.
But he has to put in a sewer system. And that would take up space.
Yeah. Uh, well, space, I don't know. They don't have to necessarily have a sewer system on that property. In fact, I don't know if they could have a sewer system on that property. So they'd have to work with the neighboring property owner who is outside of the protection zones in order to do that.
So to build on this property, which is a which is within a drinking water protection zone. And your planning staff recommendation is that they do in fact have the ability to build five hundred and twenty one like units?
No.
No, that's not what you're saying.
I'm not giving you a recommendation. I'm telling you what the law states.
They possibly could.
Do you understand what she's asking you?
To the area.
Um, there could be sewer in the future.
If if they provided sewer.
But that's a future.
Zoning could give them five hundred and twenty one units in one building.
That's assuming a future situation and applying it to today's reality. To make five hundred and twenty one work. There is no sewer. So if you wanted to do five hundred and twenty one, you'd be septic. Yeah.
They couldn't do.
Wouldn't be able to do septic with the.
So is this develop a land?
It depends.
It doesn't make sense to me. It's almost like the county missed the fact that you can't grant transfer development rights when you've got property that you're trying to protect. So how does that fit in?
So the county didn't miss that because we haven't done anything yet. We haven't created any new rules.
You know, Ogden made a bad, bad business decision, and now they're trying to make the better. Now they're trying to somehow fix their bad decision. If you want to build it, my outlook, I'll tell you real simple, my outlook is, and I was out in the lake today. I was looking at that property and I looked at it from above. You want to build five hundred and twenty one unit building on that building, go for it. Just do it. You're never gonna do it in reality. But seeking to move those somewhere else in the valley because you made a bad business decision and you bought that land knowing you would never build on it because you can't in reality. Reality matters. And this is the Ogden Valley plan right here. And there's all sorts of language in here about transfer development rights. It isn't exactly in the code per se, word for word. But I think the intent is, and the intent is not what we're talking about right now. This did not contemplate fixing Ogden's problem by moving crazy amounts of density somewhere where it's gonna create a massive problem in the valley.
In fact, the general plan specifically states finding ways to retire development rights, which I would think this is an exact example of retiring a potential of five hundred and twenty.
I've been sitting in these meetings for three years, and this is the craziest talk I've heard in three years, for sure. So are these, are these units counted in fifteen thousand?
Yep. There.
I don't think that matters. I I don't think that matters because you have to get down. If you want to follow the general plan, then you have to look at the details of every single transfer. That's what this says. And that's why I brought this book tonight. Because I wanted to make sure I had read it correctly, and I just read it again before the meeting. And it said you have to look at every single situation. And what I'm hearing tonight, you guys bought that land to protect your wells, which makes sense, obviously, and it's state law that you have to protect your wells. There's several phases of well protection based on how far out you are from the actual well. And I think your wells are actually on government land, on federal land.
They're on forest service.
Yeah. So you need that land. That land isn't really developable, developable on that particular side. You would have to move it
somewhere else. Put an easement on that.
But part of.
You could not retire those, ease your tax burden by putting that in an easement for us because it's on federal land.
A little confusion where the wells themselves are on forest service property.
Right. So the intent as part of purchasing this property too is that those wells are getting tired, right? And we want future replacements for them, right? As part of that property being purchased, we would have had by in the intent of repurposing or relocating some of the wells and then decommissioning some of the wells off of the forest service property.
I'm allowed to ask you this, but I'm going to anyway. Who are you selling them to?
We don't have any plans, any negotiations on the table. We're simply trying to protect the interests of the property was valued as such, and our ratepayers ultimately paid for that value. So we're just simply trying to best those rights so that if and when in the future, say, the quality of water does happen, that we need to do something with the site. Would we be required to have some development rights in order to do some type of treatment facility? I don't know what that looks like.
The wells.
Or if and when.
He wants to dig new ones, right?
Or or I'm just, I'm just saying in the future, I'm trying to see the grander vision in the future. We don't know, as we know it, the quality water is great right now. But that could change as development occurs in that valley and as that potentially.
To the popular, as to make decisions on waves. And also, I don't understand that there has to be development rights. You own the land. If you're running to dig new wells on it, you could.
So if even in the sense that Ogden needed to take, e- even in the sense that Ogden needed to relocate, at that point, who's to say that we couldn't come in and have somebody develop property and repurpose wells somewhere else?
Sell the property, right? You could.
Right. But if we don't, if we're out of.
Valuable in the future.
Right, but with having been bought with the TDRs.
TDR didn't exist. You can't say that because the ordinance just went into effect. Yeah, the general plan was twenty sixteen. When did you buy the property?
Twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen.
It wasn't in the general plan. Everybody's led to believe there will be TDRs.
Well, we were in good faith acting with it having been zoned like it was with your predecessors. That that would be the value of those development rights and in good faith, we purchased that.
Would you have it in a contract?
We had it in appraisal.
Yeah, but that's not in fact. And I and I don't mean to be rude. I'm just finding.
But that's that's what the intent of this agreement would be, because ever since, like what he had mentioned earlier, twenty eighteen, we've been trying to work this forward and step it in in trying to get these development rights locked up.
Charlie, when when did the first TDR ordinance come in?
Well, we did have a TDR ordinance at the time, but the DR one zone has TDR components in it. It's just, we don't think about it very much because the resorts.
Why here? Because this is not. No, yeah, it's not the DR D R one. That was different. That was to encourage.
The DRR one zone says that transferable development rights can happen from anywhere on the valley floor below a certain elevation, as long as they're moved into the resorts. Now, the resorts already have more development than they know, more development rights than they know what to do with right now. They're not even hardly developing them, I guess, a little bit in the pattern of them. And so they're not gonna be asking for these rights. They're not gonna be coming to buy these rights.
That's fine. That's not my question. My question is, the actual, I remember being, and I joined in early, I I joined in twenty two, I believe, my my commission ship. I was here when we were discussing potential language for the TDR ordinance. So it did not exist yet until twenty twenty two at the very earliest, in my understanding. The actual ordinance that that decided sending, receiving uh, where, you know, shoot, we talked about whether or not we could bank, because I was a vocal person saying no banking.
Yeah.
That whole thing that spelled out what you could do with the development right to actually transfer is at the very least twenty two, if not maybe twenty three.
Yeah, you're you're talking about the, what we call, I affectionately referred to at the time as the big TDR ordinance, which never got adopted. Now, the little TDR ordinance is that there's a little TDR component in the form-based zone, and there's a little TDR component in the DRR one zone. Both of those would be eligible receiving areas.
But neither are this zone. This is CBR one.
In order to be a sending area, you don't have to be in this valley.
You'd have to send if you went back in history and descending to a resort.
Yeah, if if we go before preform base, it would be.
Okay, so when you bought these, the only place you could sell them was a resort. Did your did your financial analysis tell you that they're supposed to bring?
I don't, I can't.
Well, you better, I would I would suggest looking at at some point. And maybe you have recourse if you got a bad appraisal. I don't know. But to me, this just doesn't seem to flow at all with the general plan. It just seems to be completely contrary to the general plan. If that's what you were reading in twenty eighteen To the general plan. If that's what you were reading in twenty eighteen. And if you knew. The code says you could only send these to a resort area, which Charlie just said are full up already. Then I don't know how your appraisal could be putting in kind of significant value. And would you mind telling us what value? These units had in your appraisal? Did you get a public document?
That's, it's in appraisal.
Is it a public document?
Yes, that's, this will be in the packet that you.
Can you tell us?
Yeah, I, well, on the units, I've to get into the details of it. I know that the city, I believe they paid around. I think it's six point six or something. It was before my time.
I know, but how much did they value the belt? Not what the land.
Hmm, I don't, well, it breaks them out, but I don't know that as I'm thinking back through it. Sorry, I'm trying to think through all the documents I've looked at, but I. I know that they had broken out the seventy five hundred square foot as well as the two thousand square foot on the units. But I don't, I'm trying to think. I don't know if they did establish a dollar amount associated to the specific life. Development rights per se.
But if it was part of the appraisal, then it would have a value.
I think what he's saying, and forgive me, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's saying is that the value, the appraisal value is what the highest and best use of the property was that in the CDR one zone. Which would be assuming that there's a, a potential of putting a sewer system in and building the five hundred twenty one units. Not necessarily that there was a value assigned to any TDRs at the time.
Sure. Yes, absolutely. Cortland.
Yeah.
Would you weigh in on this, please?
Well. And there you're talking about the question of. What, the appraisal or?
No, does he have the right to these TDRs?
That's a really big question to ask me. So what I've heard is. If this zone had those. Rights associated with it. Planning has talked about how if they were to develop, they could have put those, that number of units on that land potentially, correct? And so. That would have been something they would have been entitled to do if they met all the requirements to develop.
But the, the, the requirements or the entitlement to develop under CDR one is one thing.
Right.
How does that absolutely tie to? The TDRs? So don't they need to be, I mean, don't they need to be going somewhere as well? And. And what if there is water protection and those overlays? How does that affect his right to build on CDR one? Doesn't that? Negate it?
It depends on the way the ordinance.
Okay, I want specifics. Go ahead.
Yeah, it depends on the way the ordinance is worded. And so. If we have a state law or a county ordinance that excludes. Particular land or. Property or something from being able to transfer rights from it. Then that would be something that would have to be evaluated. In the absence of that, then we would look at the ordinance to see. Whatever rules govern that. And we've talked about some of the. The fact that the, I think you called it the big TDR ordinance that would kind of be a blanket ordinance hasn't ever been adopted. So we look at the receiving areas that are governed by ordinances, form based and DRR one. And we see what restrictions are listed in those, if there's anything about sending areas and. Um, if there aren't any restrictions on it. And if it's just kind of able to be used from this type of ascending area. Then if it complies with everything. They would be able to. Potentially transfer those if there is a buyer, just the same as a. Farmer would.
Would they have to have a buyer? Uh, in place. Is that part of the ordinance? Because TDRs were formalized. Basically, not ever completely, in my opinion, but for after I was on the planning commission. So tell me. Are, would he have to have the buyer here? That's why I asked you the question.
Which we don't have a buyer.
Yeah, so he can't just pocket them. So who's pocketing them? Who's holding them? Who decides where they go?
I think that, so there was, there was discussion, I believe during the deliberations, it's been brought up, um, of the question of banking them.
Banking, that was in the term of somebody buying them and holding them, not, not the owner. Prior to selling them. That banking was. I'm a developer. I'm gonna go buy as many as I can and I'm gonna hold them.
Right.
On one acre, a little parcel somewhere. And then I'm gonna use them for myself or I'll sell them in ten years. That is what banking meant when we were discussing.
So my understanding of planning, basic understanding that if it's not written in code, it's not allowed. Correct?
If it's a use.
If it's a use.
If it's a use, yes.
Okay, if it's not in code, it's not allowed. So.
That's what the Weber County Code says for Weber County.
Well, in national. Conferences I've been to, they all say the same thing.
Couple of different types of zoning styles, but the one that you're referring to is plenary.
Okay.
Yeah, so. That's what I was.
Okay, so we do not have clear definition. On what this gentleman is asking.
Well, okay, so the way I would. Back up and analyze it. If you had a buyer here. Well, first of all, I would not even come before the planning commission, um.
If it's in the DRR one zone, it might. I can't remember what that process.
But it's not.
So sorry, not this property. If the buyer is in a DRR one zone, I don't recall whether or not that comes.
Okay.
But if the buyer is in a form based zone, they would come to the planning commission, the way the form based zone.
Right, so a property owner has the right if. They need all the requirements to go ahead and convey those. And so what's happening here tonight is, and I haven't seen anything in writing, but a request to basically recognize. Those rights as they are believed to exist right now by the property owner, correct? It is, it is.
So if we were to give this to him. It would be reasonable for us to put in the contract, the development agreement or whatever agreement we want to say, is that you may not sell these at any future time except to. A D D DRR one zone.
Which, it's in there, in this.
So they cannot turn around and sell it to somebody on the valley floor where they can put that many more units on the valley floor. Which would be completely against what it was all about.
Sure.
Yeah.
Gonna add a complication to that.
Now, if I had had this and could read this beforehand, that would have been good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a complication to your scenario. Four months from now, none of the DRR one zone is going to be in the same jurisdictions as this property.
Oh, but you're right. You're right. No, no, that's something to consider because he could not fulfill his agreement in that case.
There are.
Why? He can still sell to a DRR one. It doesn't.
There are, there are currently rules now on what happens with transferable development rights between jurisdictions. Right now.
Because we don't have bigger rules about TDRs in our area.
We do, in the, in the form based zone and in the DR.
I understand, but the big TDR versus the small TDR. Now, I'll ask you a separate question. Cause I'm still not convinced.
There is even.
That it's even a developable.
Yes, so.
Where, so I am under the impression that a neighbor. And you've been here a long time, so you might know this. I don't know this. That a neighbor, Mr. Robert Fuller, um, attempted. To subdivide or do something with his properties, but he was actually denied based off of his property being. In a protection zone and therefore could not develop. Is that correct?
Initially denied, but my understanding, I think if I remember right, is it was ultimately approved because he proposed to move the drain field. Outside of the protection area.
He had to work with the health department to get it out of that area.
So hold on, but he's across the street. And the issue became whether or not. He would, he could develop because he's in the protection area. And that's across the street. So what I would like clarity on. Is. The setbacks of, on this piece of property that was specifically purchased to protect, to be a protection zone. Where does that extend to? And then adding the, the drinking water protection zone in with the. What is it? Zone to the sewer, uh. There's another code here.
So does Ogden own any other land in the mountain that you could put?
Not, it's just. To my knowledge, it's just this property.
And you're putting new piping in.
Yes.
From the wells all the way down to the city.
Yeah, from the wells all the way down to the mouth of the.
So if you had to relocate or you needed to drill another well, chances are beyond that property.
Most likely, yes, as long as the conditions that suit it. And yeah, we have to meet certain parameters or radiuses to some of those, those existing wells to meet some of the state regulations.
So it's in Ogden's best interest that forever you maintain those twenty four acres.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity as open space to give you the flexibility, the protection, the confidence that you need so you can deliver water every day to your ninety thousand.
Right, as, as long as water quality stays as it, as we now know it, right? So.
And you could go deeper to even do all sorts of things on that property.
Yes, condition to the state.
Yes. So it's safe to say, I guess my question, you'll never. Build anything on that property. You'll never sell it. You'll never build it. As long as that's your well.
As, yes, as long as those wells say, stay suitable for the quality aspect of delivery, right? We. Or in the event that something does get slightly out of parameters. Having to have some type of treatment facility potentially. Be able to.
Yeah.
I think future use or not use is a slippery slope. I understand what you're.
Hardly a place.
Yeah, I, I, I get that. I get that it can be considered, but really what I think we have to make it remain to what's happening now. Agreed, cause that gets into this. Well, in the future, there could be a sewer, but. Yeah, we're doing it just. So we're gonna have, if you give him future stuff, we have to take, you know, it's a slippery slope. Charlie, you were.
But well, you, well said.
You started asking a question and I liked the way your question was going, if I understood what it was, but I wasn't fully.
I didn't finish because I've lost, um, the second, there's the drinking water protection zone, which has varieties of setbacks, which I'd like to understand.
Oh.
Okay. But then there's also like a secondary water or wastewater or. Sewer sewage, septic, something. I've got a lot of homework in front of me, but I'm. Working the second protection zone.
The second one that you're talking about, is that in reference to the source water protection zone? Or where's that coming from?
I don't, but we could add that as a third. I think it had to do, I have it somewhere, um. But it's something having to do with. What is in here? Something having to do with what you have to set back to be able to put, whether it's septic, secondary, um, wastewater.
So, um, the source water protection zone. Source water protection code, let's just get it working the word zone. It's a misnomer here. Um, basically says that there are four. Lowercase zone, lowercase z zones that surround a well. Uh, the first is zone one and in zone one, uh.
You want prohibited uses or allowed uses?
Uh, let's go prohibited uses in zone one. Thank you for looking at that.
Yeah. No uses in addition. This is for reference, this is, uh. In our land use ordinance one oh eight dash eighteen dash six. Okay. This is specifically the reference for prohibited uses zone one. Surface use, storage or dumping of hazardous waste or material expressly, including industrial or commercial uses. Of agricultural pesticides. Except when such pesticides are used in farming applications within strict compliance of the manufacturer's recommendation of use. Subject to inspection by local officials. That's number one. Number two, sanitary landfills. Number three, hazardous waste or material disposal sites. Number four, septic tanks or drain field systems. Number five, sanitary sewer lines within a hundred fifty feet of a wellhead or spring collection area. But you also, did you just say it's prohibited to put a septic tank?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
In zone one.
Which is a hundred feet, what was it?
Hundred, hundred feet surrounding the, the well.
So no septic tanks. Right. Within zone one. And since there's no sewer, how are we developing?
So if you think about the community that's on the west side of the reservoir. They've got a comp, actually, there are two different common drain fields over there.
Okay.
Um, those aren't full blown septic systems.
Drain fields, which didn't I hear her say was a prohibited.
Can't, can't be in zone one. In fact, I don't think they could be in zone two either.
Next to your drinking water.
But if right across the street, Mr. Fuller was able to get far, far enough distance to get his out of zone two. That's the distance you would need to go to get this one out of zone two. So if they had. Property owners next door, they, you know, spend enough money on a, on a septic system, a common septic system. Um, the, the idea is they probably could make it work. They'd have to pay for it and all that. They'd have to. Uh, make it work on a neighboring property and it would be outside of the source protection. So it's not said it will want to do that.
Right, but so there are. To. To represent that the full twenty four acres. Should be taken into account as developable land. And, and multiplied by the CDR one density allotment. Is a false representation because at the very least there are. Protected setbacks of area that would be taken out because there are these ones there. Am I off base here? I mean, that just seems like exactly what was just said.
Wouldn't be taken out. So they could use the entire twenty four acres of, so let's just say a resort operator wants to come in and buy the property. Again, I want to make sure it's clear. I'm not telling you that this is how I think it should be. This is, I'm telling you how the law currently works. Um, the resort operator comes in, buys the property from Ogden City, um, but Ogden City keeps, maintains their, their wells on that property or right adjacent to the property. Um, that resort operator would need to figure out where they're going to put their drain field, their affluent drain fields. So as long as it's in a sealed, contained system. Within zone one and zone two, it's permitted. So they could fill the entire site up with development, uh, commercial. Recreational, commercial valley recreation, resort development, um, for all twenty four acres. They just need to run the pipe a little bit further into maybe the neighbor's property with consent of the neighbor, but the drain filled up with it. So it's really not, it's been done in the valley. Four different, four or five different times. I don't know. Sean, do you know how many different, uh, common drain fields we have in the valley?
They've been done in municipal water system. In conjunction, we're right next to them. I read, I read the state code and it's. You know, like the zone two, which it doesn't give a distance. It's based on a two hundred and fifty day. Timing for the water, surface water to transfer into the aquifer that the well picks up.
Yep.
Doesn't have a.
It's not a distance.
Distance.
Yep, that would need to be determined by a hydrologist or hydrogeologist.
And so they have to have that in file as part of their well protection plan. The state requires that. So that's already known.
Yep, we, in fact, we've got shapefile layers that we can look at that they don't like to make them public, but.
Right.
Um, we know what those lines are.
And with, what it says about zone two is you can't put. Sewer lines, you can't put drain fields, you can't do much.
You do sewer lines, right?
It does not exclude sewer lines are not a prohibited use in zone two. Just someone.
You can't have a drain field, that's for sure. Now, one thing it does say is you can't have a tank. That's where, uh, on the Fuller property next door, we had to have some, um, interpretation by legal and, and others to figure out. Does a tank mean the tank and the drain field? Cause if the drain field, that's the problem, not the tank unless the tank is leaking, right?
Sorry, I'm gonna jump in. They are prohibited in zone two.
Sewer lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it says in state code. So we can talk in circles there all night long about this. My outlook remains the same. Ogden made a bad deal. They, they based. I guess their purchase price on codes that didn't exist. They could have looked at the general plan. That would have probably led them in a different thought process with respect to valuation, I think. You probably would have, cause I know there's smart folks down there. And I'm sure if they would have looked at it in that context. They would have said, fine, we need the land. But it doesn't look like we have a place to sell TDRs, so we still need the land. Six million dollars is. You know, for ninety thousand people over whatever sixty years is justified. Let's do it because we have to.
So that's, I would say, I don't agree with, they made a bad deal. They.
Made a good deal.
They made a deal that they thought was, was worth it. They spent what they spent to get the land to protect their wells. I don't think there's anything bad or good about that. That, that was the value they were willing to pay. They paid it. That has nothing to do with whether or not. A secondary deal can be done now because I don't, unless we were to see a lot more studies from experts. I don't believe this is developable land, at least all of it.
That's what we would also recommend, uh, to, to have some verification that sewer is even feasible, feasible. We don't want them to go install a sewer system to, to show us that they could build on it. But at the very least, show that sewer is feasible, show that.
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed in zone.
It's not allowed in zone two.
That's why I say they need to show that sewer is feasible. Cause if it's not, then it's not. We know it's not developable.
We don't know how big zone two is.
I've, I've, I can't get into the map right now. I'm gonna look at it, but, um. It's small enough that Mr. Fuller had to just go right outside of that now.
But he saw, so like, I don't know where his property is, because he's across the street at the very least.
That's exactly right. And that's why we would want to see something that says, what is the feasibility of actually putting a common drain field of some sort on a neighboring piece of property or some. Magic pill that puts a sewer system that, that value. Or some magic pill that puts a sewer system that value wise. Uh what's the possibility or probability of that happening? That would be one of our first requests, I think, if the state in unincorporated area. Um show us evidence of this. Um even the current form based zone transferable development rights says that it's gotta be developable property. And then developable property is defined as area. Sorry, developable property. Then we were great. Net developable property is defined as the gross area subtracting out area. Um unsuitable for development and the definition for area unsuitable for development is area that is very, very unlikely. I'm paraphrasing, very, very unlikely to develop.
That's what I remembered, that we were gonna, if we're gonna increase this, if we're gonna increase density.
Potentially.
Correctly, and not this way.
And I asked a question, I'm just curious, when did the county, I guess, rezone it? From agriculture to.
No, I don't think it was, I don't think it was ever ag, if I look back at the old maps, I think, I think even back to the um. Uh nineteen sixty six maps, I think it was initially planned for some kind of a resort uh. Recreation resort, so I think it's original zoning, if not original zoning, it's definitely on the nineteen seventy two maps.
I'd like to go back to the basics. The thing that bothers me about our discussion was, these units were counted in the. Count for twenty sixteen general plan. So as intended, this could be developed with five hundred and twenty one years, because that's what was count. Now, the fact that this is a well.
Wait a second, are we sure that that property was counted and was it counted accurately if it wasn't developable? Because what he just said about the the definition is exactly what I remember.
Okay, but you're what you're talking about is something that can be removed. Part of this is a well protection zone, or is it not? Part of it is, but not all of it is in a well protection.
I would say until we know otherwise, I would, because of what was just said about property across the street. I think you have to assume that most of this twenty four acres are in well, one of the phases of protection.
I want to simplify, I want to get back. We counted this, it was intended when the general plan came out, there's five hundred and twenty one. Potential units here, we're gonna count them, because that's what can be used, okay? Director Grover, is that correct?
Um most likely, I'd have to look at the original, you know, calculation, assuming.
Assuming that's correct, okay, there's a potential for five twenty one. We've been talking about, well, and and I don't think it's any of our business, we shouldn't even be talking about whether Ogden City made a bad deal.
That I agree.
Because we we don't bring costs negative or positive into the discussion. Okay, so we're talking about, oh, but you can't develop this because it's in a well protection zone. Well, it doesn't have to remain that forever.
Sure does, based on what he just said, they're not gonna move their wells, they're not going, they don't know any other land.
I'm getting to the fact that, okay, this property. At five hundred and twenty one developed units on, they were counted, it was intended, the general plan says. You can move these things around. Now, there wasn't a transfer development rights ordinance there, but we invited the public to believe that. Okay, we're gonna put the pieces together, we'll create the ordinances in the future. But the general idea is, we're gonna take it from less desirable places to more desirable, meaning villages. Now, today, if it weren't for this well situation. The code says a conditional right is in motel, hotel. Uh T D R, or T D Rs, or excuse me. Short term rentals, condominium rental apartments, hotel motel, including lockout rooms. So that could be do it, done on this property, if it weren't for this well. The idea that we may want to drill a well here in the future. Okay, well, don't these rights then exist with this property?
No, but you want to take them off to uh uh.
Okay, let me.
I I hear you trying to.
Yeah, okay, so property, five hundred and twenty one development rights. Okay, they undo their desire to put wells here. Motel, hotel condominium rentals. Okay, as long as they have water and sewer and all these. Okay, we've heard if there is sewer, then it doesn't affect the well protection.
Yes, it does.
It's not allowed.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that. When Tammy comes back in, we can.
I saw it, but you know, no expert, but I read what I read.
What did you read?
Zone two, you can't have sewer lines running through zone two, no sewer through zone two.
I'm I'm saying, if the well protection idea went away, there's no reason.
Sure.
You couldn't do this.
That's true, sure, but it didn't go away.
Okay, so as long as the, there are some restrictions on the use of this for sewer lines or something else. Then you can't use these development rights. And under the current ordinance, you can't transfer them because it can't be used. It's in protection, but if that use goes away. If if that restriction goes away, the five hundred and twenty one still exists, they are on the property.
So he's welcome to build on his property.
Yeah. City says, just confirm, we have the five hundred and twenty one, they were originally there, okay. You got the five hundred and twenty one.
How how does that memorialize your best, I guess, knowing that we have that in the future, though, I guess.
That's what you're looking for is affirmation, they exist.
Right.
Okay, now, existing is one thing, transferring somewhere else is another.
And I, that's what I was going to say is the different, currently, the D R one and the form based zone have different standards for. When units can be transferred there based on their current status and so. This all seems a little bit hypothetical in the sense that we're asking to be. Bound by something that um. We're not even sure how the future ordinance is going to apply as far as whether or not they can be transferred um. Charlie mentioned that we do have definitions for some of these other terms like. Basic to the that developable acreage. And that may be easier to define right now. But in terms of whether or not they can be transferred to a certain zone, either now in the future, that depends on what that zone. Says in the ordinance for receiving transferable development rights and so. Um I just wanted to point out that there are differences, and this kind of gets back to your question, looking into it a little bit more. It depends on the receiving zones requirements and so.
Okay. So he has, I mean, if he wanted to go and say, okay, base C V R one, these are his building rights, great. He had it, then they put wells on there, then they have those overlays that we've been talking about. That exists, so now the the building rights have changed. That's right, it changed, the building, the development rights have changed, the minute those wells got on there, so now. That's the way they are, so if he wants confirmation of what his billable or built. Buildable rights are, then you should be able to take care of that with administrative. Right, we don't need to, we don't need to write any contracts or do anything, they are what they are, based on. Based on what is buildable on the property right now with the overlays, right?
Yep, you understand how it works, and initially, uh Ogden City applied for um a a T D R. What are we calling it in our form based zone? It's like a T D R confirmation, it's basically an acknowledgement that there are developable rights assigned to the property. But we have um.
Then then confirm what's developed on his properties, I don't call them T D Rs.
So we we have, you're right, uh it it's the allow.
Say that again, I'm what?
Uh yeah, so it'd be the processes, the processes to help define what the base density of the property is. You're right, it's not what can be transferred, and that's the issue I brought up actually with Justin yesterday, which he may not have.
Against Ogden City. Not and and certainly not you, and I know you probably feel really beat up right now, I'm going to my codependent mode here, but sorry. It is what it is and we've got to protect our.
No, we appreciate all the discussions that have been had today and being able to talk it through, because we, at the end of the day, we want to get. Want to protect the water, right, first and foremost, as well as we want to make sure that we're accounting for all the funds that are going out of our ratepayers, right? But we want to make sure that they're to ensure.
I want to back up two steps real quick, because I just read the source water protection um code. And it does say sanitary sewer lines that are within a hundred and fifty feet of the wellhead. I think most of these wellheads are pretty far off of that.
What about zone two?
That that is zone two, that's how.
Zone two wasn't defined, in the code I read, as a distance, it was based on water flows. Uh based on engineering analysis.
Yep, I agree, uh so what the code says under prohibited uses is in zone one, it says nothing within a hundred and fifty feet. Zone two, nothing within a hundred feet, as far as sewer lines.
I have it right here, zone two is the area within a two hundred and fifty day groundwater time of travel, there's no hundred and fifty feet.
So that's not relevant to what we're talking about, scroll, go down to, go down.
You said section one oh eight eighteen six prohibited uses, zone two.
Yep.
Go down.
Yep, that's it, so if you look at zone two, read number five.
Number five, so zone two is up here number two, number five is management area.
I'm sorry, uh so we're looking at. Prohibited uses, so one oh eight eighteen six, part B, zone two.
Zone two is number two, zone two is an area within a two hundred and fifty day groundwater time of travel. To the wellhead or margin of the collection area, the boundary of the aquifer which supplies water to the groundwater source or the groundwater divide, whichever is closer.
I think you're in the definitions section.
I'm in one oh eight eighteen six prohibited uses.
I'm not sure where you're finding that.
Eighteen six is, yes. So, so, oh here, this page, so this is one oh eight eighteen four.
Go to the next page.
One oh two, well, it's previous pages, yeah, okay, so number five under zone two, the surface use. But this is drinking water source protection zone.
Mm hmm.
Number five under zone two, sanitary sewer lines within a hundred and eighty feet, so this is drinking water.
One one fifty, is yours say one eighty?
It's one fifty.
Okay.
Under five, under that.
So just to make sure it's clear, this is not a conflict, uh what it is is defining what zone two is, which is a broader area. And if you're in a zone two area, so remember, zone one is a hundred foot radius. Zone two is outside the hundred foot radius and everything within a, what was it, two hundred and fifty day groundwater travel? So that's a, that's a much bigger polygon uh that a hydrogeologist has to study. There's a fifty foot difference outside of that zone one, right, hundred and fifty feet? That fifty foot difference that goes and blends into zone two, that is what this applies to. So in, so within a hundred and fifty feet of that uh wellhead, you can't have sewer lines, you can be on that. In fact, if you look at permitted uses in zone two, um sanitary sewer systems is explicitly permitted.
So I'm gonna take my chairman right here, I believe you're Mr. Fuller.
Now, is this, you can cut through all this baloney because if Ogden City wants to do something, they can do what they want. They're not gonna do it for me, but if you will read eight, one oh eight eighteen five, five down there. In addition to the permitted uses specified, sections A and B, this section. Turned the uses prohibited zones two, three, four pursuant to this section may be allowed in zone two. Reinforced respectively, if design standards are implemented for specific use that will prevent contaminated discharges in groundwater.
Was that our funding that we used on yours?
With, no, you used on mine, but I'm just out of luck and we screwed up our estate plan and I had to. Just due sheer chance, I was able to keep moving to the west. That's what happened to my plan, this house, nothing but problems, that this never end, including now that I needed eight thousand dollar. Fire hydrant, and just one thing after another, in a twenty foot wide, maybe twelve foot, twenty foot wide driveway area. Wake up tomorrow and snap their fingers and deem those protected wells. All this zone two goes away, so here is the uh, here is a secret document right here.
Secret?
Here is your document, it's a state secret, it shows zone two is, okay? Zone two, so wait, okay, well, I don't, I don't worry the details, but yes, so all of this talking about, you can put a, you can put a sewer line through there. And so we came from a septic tank and it's all a matter of interpretation, but. I can tell you the tower in that city can do anything they want, and they could have snapped their fingers and let me put my house or one of our house. On our sixth generation piece. Clear out there into a way out to last two big panorama.
So if I I. I can empathize with the frustration and the history that you have here from. From my position as chairman, I mean, I would like to be able to understand. Um a bit more of how this coded language. Was used to stop you, but seems like it wouldn't be used to stop this, not really litigate your situation. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I know.
It might just happen, so, so I'll just tell you in the big picture here, so. So end the road there, everything it looks like down there, so at the very end of the road, this is your view.
So hold on, so that I just want clarifying questions, because I don't know this, so this super secret map that you're showing us. Is that when he says we need to have a hydrologist show a zone, is that what that is? And that other.
Two is this big cancerous nightmare that takes all of this property.
Do you recognize this map?
Mm hmm.
Takes where has the twenty four acres on this map?
It's inside it.
A hundred percent is inside that zone two area, okay?
So the way the way it starts here, just make it fast and quick here, okay, so um we start through here, I went down, fight the commit. At the end of the road, there's old red farms there, it's gonna be right there close to it. We, our family had a agreement between all of us to do this altruistic, we had a five acre minimum. And you can't go back too far into our fields, because we were getting that big open just to open, okay? Only to find out, I dig my per test hole, and I'm all set, until I did this letter, I got a call from the Weber Morgan, said how wonderful this is. However, however, Weber County ordinance part two, one oh eight, chapter eighteen, drinking water source protection. Prohibits the use of septic tanks and drain field system within the source protection zones one and two, and public drinking water can't build on there, okay?
So I read that one more time.
It's it's just, it's just the Weber Morgan Health Department specifying that ordinance, okay?
It said prohibit, but I just, I've got a lot in front of me.
Cancel the septic tank.
Septic tank, thank you.
So, so what had to happen is I had to get outside of zone two there, no exception. If they can protect wells, all bets are off, I can build no problem, but they didn't want, they were not deemed protected wells, which is just a subjective standard, I think. But, and they could say, well, I tried to get a special type of a of a septic tank to go close to the road. Which was deemed uh, it was deemed experimental, so I couldn't do that, so maybe long story short. Through out of just uh, it happened to see available and we were able to move now. Uh he's in your family, but I gotta tell you what, absolutely inappropriate and was inappropriate by the city and the county. So without any notice to ask, while we're doing estate planning, they implement this zone overlay with no notice at all. So they take all of this land, while everybody's trying to figure out what to do for the state plan, so I have this original little piece down here. And and uh so we couldn't crowd on, we couldn't crowd on a uh septic tank on there. So where we left off, instead of finding a problem from now, had to move out into the field. And that's why the road going out there is clear out about fifteen, eighteen hundred feet away from the Disney Road there. So that is, that has to, this is, this is what I'm getting, so to the same extent Ogden City has screwed up the development rights to our parcel. They have equally screwed up the rights to their parcel. What they actually thought is, that is the quintessential taking under the fifth amendment. It's a government entity taking private property for public purpose without just compensation. Which is articulated in Upper Valley Utilities versus Forum City. And the difference is with Ogden City came in and bought the property, bought that property. What they were buying is, that landowner had a peaking claim under the fifth amendment, with the city taking that property for that public use. And so they acquired it. If Ogden City said, we paid all this money for this land, we can't develop, the remedy is Ogden City, which is themselves in that. But it's a double edged sword here, because the day will come, they can, when they start moving those wells, they have protected wells. We'll go around on that, so uh, you know, it's it's complicated there, but as it stands right now, I'm not sure. But I would say if anybody tried to get a permit to build on any place on that parcel right now, you wouldn't get a permit.
Yeah, with without a sewer system.
Oh, this, okay, which is it there, okay. He mentioned something, he said, uh whether or not they are protected wells. He mentioned something, he said, uh, whether or not they are protected wells. Is subjective. Is it subjective or objective? Are these protected wells?
If, if by definition a protected well, they're talking about, um, community source wells that are approved through the state. Then these would be protected wells, just by virtue of showing up on the map. However, uh, like a. Individual well is not, if you look at the, if you, if we could see the broader map, individual wells don't show up. These are community. Yeah, now with that said, um, I think Mr. Fuller and I have a pretty similar understanding of the full situation, especially what. Mr. Fuller went through as well as, uh, I can't fault Ogden City for this. This is not on Ogden City, this is an issue, this is a state.
Anywhere. I just want to get an understanding of if we have one set of rules. For one property owner, how is that not applicable to the other property owner? I don't see.
It is, it's same way that you're thinking.
Okay.
Listen, there's a point. In the legal sort of protected well, this is its own protection, this is a water protection area. There's also a protected well, which is the way it's built, the way it's sealed. Which I assume next wells are gonna be protected.
Does that define differently in state?
We looked at all the different language to try to get around this because I didn't want to be clear out in that field. I didn't want to build there. So. Um, there are differences in protected well, but I can tell you, if you read this. What Weaver County and Ogden City choose to do, the king can do wrong. They can make that absolute development, which.
Okay, but, but for this meeting.
Right now it's not, yeah, right now it's not.
That's what I'm getting at.
Ogden City can make an application anytime if they find a buyer. Um, and then it can be determined whether or not they can move forward with the transaction of the TDRs. What is this development agreement doing? And I apologize for not having, I mean, I guess it hasn't been given until today. What's the benefit of a county and. Entering into any kind of agreement instead of just letting them make applications.
So that's the primary question that I had for, for, for Justin Anderson over at the city because what is the incentive for county? Or the future city or anyone to, to approve this, uh, development agreement requires mutual consideration. What's the mutual consideration here?
What was the answer? No, what was the answer?
Oh, uh, the answer, the answer was. I don't know if you know, I don't know if you're gonna want to hear the answer. Answer was maybe there's an opportunity to serve culinary water to the broader public up there. But they're not willing to put that on the table just yet.
No, it's not on the table.
It's a possibility. I think they want to scope.
All possibilities and like, the, the world is full of possibilities.
Yep. So Madam Chair, I think right to.
Possible.
I think right to, uh, Portland's point. The question in tonight's meeting isn't the history of the situation.
Yes.
We are by virtue of asked, uh, being asked to have a development agreement on the property. Rulemaking and is there value that you guys see in creating? Different rules that don't apply to other properties that do apply to this property, um. In exchange for whatever health benefits or otherwise are being offered by the city. And if the answer to that question is no, uniformly no, then maybe the answer to the request to development agreement is no.
I mean, we don't make decisions, we don't have motions.
Also wanted to make it clear, because I wasn't sure it was clear earlier. Staff are not advocating one way or the other.
There is some consideration listed in the recitals on this proposed agreement.
I'm, I'm sorry, what is there?
There is consideration, meaning, uh, they're offering something.
Okay.
Some benefit. Uh, recital B and C.
Okay.
Says, it says, uh, highly visible lands around Ogden Valley is located area designed. Valued for its agriculture, open space characteristic. So that this was general plan, it says that from highly visible. Open space area, you keep it that way by transferring rights somewhere.
It's not, when they bought it, they bought it as protected.
Nobody is gonna ever believe.
I'm trying to get you beyond that. Okay, here's the property.
Yeah.
Okay, they're now using a pre use that's inconsistent with development, arguably. Okay.
But consistent with the general plan, which specifically states find ways to retire density rights.
Yeah, and I have a real problem with retiring it, that means stealing. We're gonna do everything we can not to assist.
They don't say stealing, they say find ways.
We're gonna figure out some way to diminish their property rights.
We're not forcing him to do.
Shut the wells down and build five hundred and twenty one units in one building. If they want to, they can do that. If they want. We're not taking anything from them. And to say that, that that's being contemplated is.
All they're asking you to do is to acknowledge there are some development rights here. That under certain circumstances could be tested. They're saying.
And sometimes no, it's just a no.
Acknowledge that the rights exist. And then we have to agree that if the time comes, there is somebody in a DDR. Whatever it is, si.
DR one.
Yeah, oh, one, or. Let's see, or, it says, or other future areas where transfer of development rights is. Allowed. They, they're just saying, acknowledge we have some development rights. And acknowledge that there's a time in future where there's a place they could go. And somebody wants to have these rights, that we can have these rights and transfer them. Consistent with any ordinance that is in effect at that time.
But that's not besting. You wouldn't, are you suggesting besting them right now?
No, I'm just saying, acknowledge they exist. Director Grover has said they were counted in the potential development of the valley. That tells me at the time the general plan was developed, they existed. They could be built on. Now, we're just saying, yeah, that's right. In case Director Grover retires and goes to the Caribbean and we can't get a hold of him. It is remembered that, yes, these units were counted in this fifteen thousand, six hundred units. In nine, in twenty sixteen.
Here, but yes, as we're so often told when people don't want to follow the general plan, it's a general plan. And it's not a law.
Well, it's really bad faith on the part of the county to say, here's this picture, this is what we want to have.
But they've already changed. I don't think we should get into this discussion. They've already changed that picture.
Yeah, I know you want to interrupt me. But I'm telling you, the county put out this beautiful plan, they got the community in there over two years with pictures. We're gonna have all this wonderful open space, we're gonna move things to villages somewhere. Everybody looked at the wonderful open space, nobody looked at where this development rights were gonna go, where the density was going to go. But the county painted this big picture, we're gonna have this to transfer of development rights thing. This is our general plan. This is our view of the future. And people went out and made decisions based on that and purchasing property. Planning for the future. Uh, and now for the county to come back today, we didn't have a transfer of development rights ordinance until twenty twenty two. Therefore, if you believe our beautiful picture we painted for you of the future, you're a sucker. Because we don't have to follow that. That's bad faith.
I believe you just made the exact argument I made about allowing new commercial. Because the general plan said specifically, do not do that until our commercial is full up. With Eaton Crossing, and I specifically stated, these people have been paying commercial taxes. On good faith that that's where that is, and now we're changing game. And it was everywhere. You just made the exact argument.
I, I will argue with you.
But, and, and this isn't a forum for a vote, and nothing has to be unanimous, and everybody can have a different opinion. Uh. This is a workshop, is. Do you have a sense of, when you wanted to come in front of us to get a feel for things, do you feel like you've gotten a feel for things?
General tense, yeah, yeah.
Before he answers.
His eyes are bloodshot.
I feel bad for the guy.
I want to, I want to dip a toe into that proverbial wall just to see if it gets.
Ice bath.
Yeah, let me, let me, uh, let me ask you guys this question. Um, thinking about this as if you were future city leaders. Uh, not necessarily the county planning commission. Um, we do know when it comes to, uh, access to water in the valley, access to water is challenging for a number of reasons. Um, the most reasonable way to provide that is by treatment of surface water on the reservoir. Uh, now. If that was a different story, and this is one thing that Bone and Collins did not provide in their study. That was a different story because the valley had access to a clean drinking water source that didn't need surface water treatment. Is that a give that the planning commission, you guys here, if you were future city leaders, would be interested in working?
And I, there are so many things that make that unanswerable at this. Number one, I mean, I don't need to listen, or I don't have to, and I can just leave it there. Okay, that's just, that's something that can't be answered right now. There's a lot to unpack on that.
Thanks for not chopping off the toe, just a little nibble.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Yes, question though, so again, as I asked with the previous one, is this looking like it's coming? I mean, I haven't, we, I'm, I'm the chairman and I don't find out what's on our agenda until a few days before. Is this coming up on our next agenda or are you considering? Uh, reworking some things to figure out a better.
We haven't made any promises on an agenda and we assume that today's meeting will probably go exactly as it has. Um, our expectation is if it gets on an agenda for a public hearing, it'll probably do after a couple more work sessions. Or if the commissioners tell us to move it forward.
Uh, yes, with consideration of more work sessions. That super secret map, right, and discussion. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Thank you. Work session number three. So we have, what do we have? We're still looking at our time zone here. We're on the last one. We can make this happen. All right, uh, discussion regarding Nordic Village. Okay, I have a question.
How many questions?
We have another application that we didn't have.
Oh, yeah, I know. I just honestly don't, how can we have an intelligent conversation when we haven't had one more?
Well, it just puts things off. It just makes it so that we can, you know, we don't know who's can go.
And with work sessions, it's all up to the applicant on what they submit.
We talked about this back at the register, it shades, you know.
We've had conversations with applicants that if they want the conversation to go well, then they need to make sure.
I have one question because this seems so strange to me that we didn't get more ahead of time. In the simple fact that we do have two brand new commissioners who have not been here. Um, we got. A street regulating map with no legend. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what any of this means. I just look at this. But there's clearly a different street rag map that's currently approved. But we're not able to look at one in comparison to the other. Until, I'm gonna guess you're gonna put it up on the screen right this second, but we could have done this so we could have come with a better. Understanding and ability to discuss it clearly. And you can have those powers, you know.
Work session items, we tried to, if we have the time, we try to put a memo together and put that on there. Uh, what information we do have, um, it's just a matter of staff timing with work sessions. Our staff reports for regular meetings, we make sure they're polished and everything, but work sessions. It just really depends on the amount of workload that we have and if we're able to get you those cover letters on there. We try to, but right now, we, there's no way we can do that, Madam Chair.
Just because of your staffing?
Correct. And the workload we have out in West Weaver, I can guarantee you that will happen this year.
And this is not meant in any kind of negative way. It's genuinely a clarifying question. As I've heard repeatedly, we're so swamped with Western Weaver. But my understanding is that as one of the two unincorporated areas. And a tax supplier that receives services. How? You, you're still responsible for providing the valley with planning services and all these things. Regardless of whatever is happening in Western Weaver, you can't neglect your other taxpayers.
Definitely not, and I can guarantee you that the exact same work sessions that are happening in West Weaver. Are exactly what's happening here.
Okay.
They're having the same.
They're, they're, they're nothing different. Everything that's happening in West Weaver, you're getting probably better treatment up here than they are out there. Um, right now, um, I'm, I'm not even gonna go into the.
Fine, I just, it's like, I keep hearing, we're so busy and I'm like. We're still, you're still responsible.
Oh, we definitely take very good care of you. If you saw, you can go online and too, and look at the packets that go to Western Weaver versus Ogden Valley. They are exactly the same.
Okay.
Can I, can I speak to that?
You go ahead. It's the boss's boss.
Yeah, so it's, it's a good question and I, I appreciate you bringing it up. And I will say the reason that we are down to full time planners is because of the incorporation. We don't know what's going to happen because you don't know if the new city's going to contract with us, so we are not hiring those positions. And, and, and so. We are short staffed. It, it's just a reality.
Get them.
And as far as service goes, we're, the applications that are coming in are, are what we're reacting to. We're not prioritizing Western Weaver over the Ogden Valley or Ogden Valley over Western Weaver. We're just reacting to what we're getting coming in. So that's, that's the reality. Charlie was here until almost ten o'clock last Friday night submitting our moderating housing plan to the state. I mean, we're, we are doing everything we can with the staff that we have, overworking our employees right now. And, and it just, I don't want there to be, I don't want my staff to think that. But they're being picked on because they're doing the best they can. And I, I, I just want everybody to know that from my perspective. They're doing everything they can and I'm asking them to do more than they probably should be doing.
I appreciate that. I hope you don't actually think I was picking on.
No, no, no.
As I stated.
Yeah, absolutely. For everybody that's here, because that question was brought up, I just want that out there.
Thanks. Okay, absolutely. I do have, if I could, this is a separate, what I have before we start the Nordic Valley is. Something that comes up in a lot of the discussion with. All the stuff that's going on with Nordic Valley as an application and a, and a development. It's never come back to us from its original. I haven't seen it since it originally came with four hundred and something units. What I don't understand is, because it's never come back, when I hear what it's thrown to. I'm baffled because it's not, like, anything that's not de minimis should come back and I don't understand how we've never seen it again.
There's a, there's a lot of rumor about it growing beyond what the development agreement says, but that's not accurate.
Whatever happens in the valley, I'll let you say it. Just, so, yeah, so, okay. All right, so right now we're only talking street rag. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I guess I'll get with you separately on some of that. Because of the fact that we only have a little bit of time left.
Okay, I, I can answer.
I'd love it.
That, we can do that later if you want to. I could do it in a couple of seconds too, if you want me to try a couple of minutes too, if you want me to try. I'll save minutes.
So can I make one up? This is the same observation I've, I've made almost every time a, uh, street regulating plan or map. Shows up and it happened once where I asked, could I see that overlay over a real geographic? Map that shows what reality looks like, because this could be in China, I don't know. You know, where are the lot lines, where are the existing roads? And it did, and it did that once and it was so helpful to be able to see that. It took it from China to reality immediately. And so I'm looking at this right now and I'm a little bit familiar with that area, but I had no idea specifically. You know, the impacts that we're gonna be talking about here, if I can't see what's there today.
Yep, very helpful feedback for the applicant, making sure that it's very clear to you guys that we did not create any information that's in front of you.
Yeah, so.
And it's not here. No, he's right there. Oh, oh, hi. Different than you were a few minutes ago.
I, I, I sent this to one of the applicant before and they created a map. That I could look at and go, oh yeah, that makes complete sense. This makes no sense.
So I guess in your counseling of applicants, and, and granted, they get to reject your counseling, but if your counseling is, hey, listen. This is what really works for them and they appreciate it. If you could keep that consistency with that overlay method.
We, we used to have enough time to counsel that, do that. Unfortunately now we're saying give them what you can. We, we used to have enough time to counsel that, do that. Unfortunately now, we're saying give them what you can, and hopefully it's good enough.
Okay.
So on that.
Challenge.
I have, I can't sit here and not say it. You know, in my world where I come from, if you can't do it right. You don't do it where you wait until you can.
Do you guys?
Things have, you know, to me. Unless there's a really good reason to, I'd rather wait a little bit and do it right.
I was gonna say, can I offer a solution? Maybe it's defer this discussion to another work session, if, if that's how the feeling is coming out. Uh, but if you do that, it would be nice to get some feedback to the applicant, so they can hear exactly what it is that you're hoping.
Love to hear from the applicant. I'm glad this is valid where you want, so that we hear directly from you, so that we have some context when we get that back.
You bet, yeah.
But she's the chair, so you tell her, you bet, we're all good.
Yes.
Ryan Christopherson, representing Nordic Village Ventures. Um, and I apologize, I thought we had included a narrative as well as. This, uh, street regulating plan amendment that you have. And then we had to attach the existing one that's attached to our development. Okay. We had followed the same type of outline that is in our development agreement. Um, one from twenty sixteen, that's why it's that style. If you want an overlay, I think that's why we're here to have that work session. Hopefully to make it a little more clear.
Is this like twenty sixteen?
Development agreements.
Okay.
That's been happening a long time. What's happening underneath?
Okay, I'm thinking rezonate farm base, I think, okay.
In the original, uh, form base code, we have a small lot residential road. I have it shown in, in this orange that, actually, can, can you show the?
The original?
Yeah, the original one. Shown here, we've identified it. SLR, street location. Right now, it's going more towards the edge of our development on the east side, closer to, um, other residents.
This is the existing.
This is the. Correct.
Street regulating map.
Correct.
Okay.
The, the light orange dash. We are proposing a change to bring it up more towards the west. And connecting it to the roundabout. So bringing, um, the connectivity back up more towards the village core.
So that's the one you're amending, or you'd like to amend?
Correct.
Can you go back again, Tammy? I didn't see a flip. Yeah, with different backgrounds, it's hard to even know where you're placing that, so. So there the roundabout is, is the roundabout now? So there's a roundabout now on this one.
This road right here, that comes up here, would go essentially here. That's the proposal, and then that portion is to leave.
Is that this? Soft yellow, like yellowy-orange one?
Yeah.
And that's all open space right now?
Wait, ask that question again. What part's open space?
Is that, so where the road is proposed to be changed to, you just point it to?
Not open space, no, that's developable area.
No, so it is. But I say open, like it's the former valve course or whatever.
Oh, sorry.
There's nothing on there now. There's nothing on there now.
This yellow is on the west side of the road that goes up right now, and this is on the west side. Or is it on the east side because?
So we're looking north?
So we're looking north. So for me, I put it this way north. So. Here's the roundabout, which is at the oblique. Yeah, this is the main road going up to the. Viking that goes up to the ski resort itself, right? Or this is up higher. So the roundabout is up higher than what I'm looking.
The, the farm that got there, that's where the ski.
Oh, okay, so these little details, that makes more sense.
I'm not able to see what just got said.
Can you show us with the mouse when you're going?
Yeah. Okay, so now that makes a lot more sense.
No, but not to me.
See, I was thinking this roundabout is down lower, you know.
This is the, the roundabout shown. Currently, the SLR is coming, kind of sneaking up and connecting to Nordic Valley Way. We are asking that we, instead of coming up from Nordic Valley Road and connecting to Nordic Valley Way. We would like to bring it up into our development, come around this property that we don't own. And then tie it back into the roundabout.
How's that property owner that you don't own feel about that?
He wants access.
And, and we have a little stub to his site for future development.
Wait, I'm sorry, so you're saying that the property owner of the property, they, this gentleman doesn't own, he is happy.
Well, I don't know about happy, I can't say that.
He's on board.
It's a, it's a deep subject, yeah, um, as long as there's access that comes to it.
So I'm the land planner, so we, we are basically taking the road.
Sorry, the land planner for Nordic.
For Nordic.
Okay.
And we're taking the road and just swinging it closer and up into our development. Part of the reason is we're expanding the ponds for snowmaking, and so we feel like pulling the development closer in. We're, we're showing that stub because as Charlie preaches, connectivity is. Always better, but in our plan, it would be open space, but it's there in case if and when that landowner ever wanted to develop or could develop. That stub and that's, that land is there, which makes Charlie.
Yeah.
So all we're trying to do is take development density and pull it further west and be on the west side of the pond. That's the only thing. Everything else we're in compliant with, with our development. Roads will be shorter, we may be further away from our neighbors with homes. Those are the two.
Sounds like a good win.
So that's, I think, the only reason, that's the only reason I think that this got on your agenda as, as soon as it did. Because we wanted to have the cursory discussion with you on that suggestion, see if you guys felt like that was a win. Um, and then go into a more detailed discussion in another work session or in a public hearing, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Work sessions, I'm still not entirely without this overlay, I'm not entirely sure.
The trick with those exhibits is Charlie, he's taking creative. I don't have all that same data, so I can't get rid of his stuff, put ours on it, so. We can work towards making it easier to see side by side, but literally all it is, is that road that's this. As we're swinging it to the west side of the ponds and it's shorter.
As long as there's a, 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 a hearing, yeah, and so if anybody does want to turn, they can complain.
I hear you, but I, I feel like I'm a little bit open to a second work session where, then I can even provide, I can provide. I actually just had my hands earlier, uh, an example of what. I just have our saying in terms of what a previous developer came in, but it wasn't on the screen, because it's something that needed. It had, um. See-through, um, pages you could flip so they could put these overlays over, and you had one level that was the existing topography. One level that was the current of Rita font, and one level that was the, the requested change, so you could actually. Play with and see and, you know, um. Move it around and touch it, uh, it shouldn't have to be, well, Charlie's maps and our maps don't always play well together. You can actually bring it up physical copy, and I'm happy to share that if the others.
Yeah, and, I mean, really, if we just, I mean, I.
So.
Nordic Valley Way. Nordic Valley Road, this on the general plan, or on the development agreement, sorry, does that.
Uh huh.
All we're asking to do is that.
And what is that land over there? That's all white space on this map?
It's just more of the old.
Give me, uh, give you about sixty seconds, I'll have this up on the screen, so you can see what he's showing.
That's my house.
Yeah.
Well, so hold on a second, okay, if, can I, if you don't mind, everybody, and I, I have this right as chair. So the current agreed upon street regulating map, you're saying goes through your home or goes around?
No, no, it goes closer to our lot line. So what he's saying is our lot line is after that green space.
These are existing.
Then that whole row has homes.
Okay, and if they move it, so.
This way.
And it's tighter into their development, it's farther away from your house, how does that make you feel?
You know, good and bad. Can I tell you why?
Yes.
I feel good for me, and that, that's great, I love it.
Right.
But here's my question, may I ask?
You may, yeah.
Here's my question, when we do this. And move this yellow line in and put an orange line across there. That means more commercial condos, apartments.
That orange line is there.
Existing.
So would this be an increase in density?
No increase in density, we're not, we never have increased the density of the place.
Now I just make sure I understand, so your question was, is the color changing because the colors mean certain?
Other changes.
About the effect on the ponds, because. And I would like to understand, I live on Viking. So I wanna know what's gonna happen, you, you're talking about expanding your ponds, would you bring that to life? Sorry.
That's okay, and, but, yes.
This is great, you wanna?
You just wanna expand ponds?
For income larger.
Larger for snowmaking than that also, that's the point.
Because they are currently used for snowmaking.
Right.
They're just, and they've become overgrown and, and the ability to have the mountain function, um, better, it's to, you know. And that was part of the, we thought it was all a win, was to make those ponds bigger, pull the development above them. And we have that other out pasture that Ryan was talking about that we're going around, so we're not pulling it necessarily even closer to existing homes. When you think about the separation, it's really there.
So making these ponds larger, because that, this application hasn't come back to us, I haven't seen whatever changes are being made or have been made. Does engineering need to look at that and sign off?
Not right.
On a slope?
Not right now, they wouldn't. Not, not as part of this request.
No, not this, I'm just, this is, they're just saying.
So a separate, yeah, there, we would work through the state and any sort of water rights, dam safety, and, and that's in process. So it's, yeah.
Water resource forms are conditional use permits, which planning commission would see, so.
Oh, they would come in with this later.
And, and the real reason you haven't seen anything, and sorry, Ryan, to jump in from the. Is that all we've been doing is getting our first. Roads figured out can, are, so there are no development proposals other than streets at this point.
Streets that are vested in the current street regulating map, and that are not. Changing according to the amended version.
No other street is outside of the wiggle room that's allowed than this one.
Can I, I'm gonna ask a question regardless, as I, despite the fact that it doesn't have anything to do with this meeting, and, uh, but people would probably love to hear. Are there any estimated times of completing that road? The roadwork that you're currently doing?
Which one?
That's a good point.
So we have, we have phase one, which is Nordic Valley Way relocation and improvements for that. That would follow this street regulating plan would be a mixed-use commercial and multifamily road. And that is, um.
Projected right now, about November.
The construction that's happening right now in front of the resort with homeowners on the other side of the street, that one you're projecting November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pending weather.
And I fully understand that there's more coming, I'm just wondering about the current construction.
That's why you haven't seen it, because it's been processing through administration.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes it's been my experience in the past that I want all the answers too. And that, and I forget that there are other departments acting independently and doing their jobs as well. And so I don't have to have all the answers, I just have to have enough.
Commissioners, I, sorry, I would just say, we, we have been compliant with our allowances. Priority, our development agreement and our street regulating plan. As we move into what we're calling the phase three road, which is, so this is phase one. This is two, and then this is three. Well, three does not comply with the street regulating plan as it is today. We just wanna pull it further away from the house, and that's.
But that's phase three, so the next step will be phase two, which is this other one that is not changing. And then phase three would be that.
Right.
Got it.
So that whole loop to the northeast disappears.
Would go with it.
Yes.
Not anymore, I will, but I'm missing.
There, I saw two ponds on the picture.
You don't know.
Are the two ponds remaining?
We just wanna expand them, we'll combine them and expand it.
And you kind of trace the outline of where the new.
He just wants to show an outline of what the new pond structure looks like.
Oh, it's, if you took that and just kind of doubled it.
To one big one or two?
One big one. What's the source for that, for the ponds?
Ryan, that's.
Pine Creek, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, we've got two going right now. Coal Creek and Pine Creek.
We have had flooding neighbors along the back end there, so that would be a, a concern, I hope you address, and let me say you've been engineers. I know that was the mountain and trying to do the snowmaking, but we've had years of a lot of water going down into those homes. So if we can really look at that as trying to save those homes.
Absolutely.
Sweet request.
Are those ponds currently aligned?
They, they would be in the future.
In the future.
And, and that's what we're, we're going, working through the state right now with the regulations, so we would just match dam safety.
It was overfilled back then.
My head is not sure, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, that wasn't a curse, I promise.
Well, okay, but I didn't say it, I said that.
Working as chair, only you are the chair, but I have a question, and this may be just rumor. But I need to know if you guys are bringing in water trucks, or someone's bringing in water trucks to use. Water from this development out right next to a, a fire hydrant, filling up huge trucks to use for. For, to instruct in construction.
So there's dust control requirements.
Okay.
And we had worked with North Mountain.
Okay.
Water.
Okay.
Um, since then.
And they're selling it to you.
Correct, they have a meter and they're selling it to us, so we can keep the dust down, because that's also neighbors are complaining about.
Okay.
Which is a common practice.
So you've got, it's one of the people complaining about the water being taken out of the. And then you've got another side that people are complaining about the dust, and you went and you've done it through channels, this is important, because I.
So it, it wasn't simultaneously, right? It was trying to keep the dust down.
Okay.
We used that source. Um, Bill Green called us just, uh, yesterday and said, hey, we gotta shut it down because it was pulling from. The water use in that area.
Okay.
So the, the fire chief, uh, asked us, or asked the permanent stop on that, so we will not be pulling from.
Perfect.
Their source because of. What it's doing.
Good job, okay, alright, got it. Okay.
You bet, sorry, sorry for.
Fire protection. Well, I was about to say, I don't know that that's the correct source, is that, I mean, I mean.
Sorry. And you, you put a meter on the fire hydrant, and that's where they track it, and then we pay the.
Okay.
Warries.
Alright, um, so by the way, separate, um, there was a comment. Asking me if I felt it still needed a second workshop. I no longer feel that way, I don't know about anybody else. But I retract my request for second workshop based off of just the map. I would appreciate.
It's also, let's, let's talk about what it is and what it isn't, it's not a change to the street regulating plan in the form-based zone. It's a change to the vested street regulating plan in the development.
So we're not branding any more vested, right?
Hang on, okay. Okay, say that again.
So their development agreement has the street regulating plan that we put the bulls. At on the date that they got their development agreement.
Yeah.
They are changing that document in their development agreement, not changing what's in the form-based zone. So we're not going through text amendment, we're not touching form base or anything like that, we're just talking about how. The, uh, form-based street regulating plan affects just this topic. Nothing bigger than that.
They don't make motions? We don't make motions here. Anything else? I do. Um, we're good, you're good?
We'll, we'll get that overlay.
So, can you explain how the density is not?
I'm gonna keep it to two minutes.
We have, we have.
Twenty minutes. You already gave it to me.
Like there are dusty rides, but they're not transferring, okay, go ahead.
So, um, the development agreement lists a very specific number of development rights this project has.
What is that number right now? It was four something.
Four sixty-five, four sixty-something.
The date of that.
Say it again.
The date, we've had a couple of dates on development agreements that I don't have.
So only one development agreement, um, well, actually, you're right, there's a second one that adopted. The form-based zone, that's like the bulk of the property, but the, the only one that really matters is the very first one, which was in twenty twenty. Do we retrieve? Yeah. The second amendment. Yep, just that one.
Sorry.
So. Yes, the rumor of all the other density and the confusion is, um, related to the. Public infrastructure district that was made.
Okay.
The development agreement only gives a certain amount of, uh, dwelling unit rights. But they are lending off of a potential of more than that. They can't get more until they come back to the city, ask for more, go through the development agreement amendment process. But there's a separate document that governs their public infrastructure district, and the financing that, uh, it happens in there. That talks about, uh, a different number, uh, out of ambition that maybe there could be more in the future now. They've also told. They've also told me that they're not actually planning on asking for more, they just wanted to make sure they carved out the opportunity in case things change in the future. That city's gonna be totally involved on whether or not that four sixty-five goes up and not just involved, but have full control over whether or not. Uh, is that number.
It's just, it's five.
I was gonna say, because I remember.
Don't, don't cause any more confusion.
No, I, and I want that back then as well.
Yeah.
Plus that doesn't count condos hotels.
It counts condos and it counts, it counts hotel suites, so if there's a kitchen, bathroom and a bedroom, then it does count those. But you're right, it doesn't count hotel rooms, that's just a room, a bathroom and a coffee.
And, and just, but it's also not, that's, that's how it is.
Right, no, I knew that, but may I ask them, what is the number, because eight twenties in that plan, the, the plan in the budget.
Our current investing is five sixty-five.
Bless what for your hotel or your?
Yeah, there isn't a, like, a number that's.
So we can do a study.
You still have to, you have to fit within the height, parking and setbacks, so there is a, there's not a map, I mean, you're good to a thousand.
So it's no number, we don't have a ceiling on this thing.
Just a max height, that's the ceiling.
Yeah. That's literally zero.
Can I ask, can I, I was curious if, if you want to say, when will your first verse, building over? Is there a, are you?
And they spent. I think we have, twenty tw- what do you say, it's twenty twenty-five, I mean, twenty-six, we're still gonna wanna be doing about infrastructure. I think we'd hope for one twenty-seven.
That first instruction would be at the base or would it be off?
Everything.
What we know is at the base. Well, what we think of that, the area that burned down, the, the ski or services.
The slope side.
Yeah, is that where your first buildings would be?
We do a combination, so some single families available condos, just have a little bit of variety.
So you might do some chalais and then some of the stuff, it still looks like what I run.
In twenty seven.
Who else wants to take home, anybody? Tell me, yeah, make things fun, okay, yes. Yeah, you can, I need some more, you're right.
Thank you, so much, I appreciate that.